To order the zoning board of appeals meeting. Can I start with a roll call, please?
Barbara Barosa.
James Meyer.
Aziz Essam.
And Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, we do have a couple of changes to our agenda from what was posted. Number one, there is no new information for public hearings number two, three, and five. We will open them and adjourn them. So if there is something critical you need to state within those, we'll accept the comment, but otherwise, there's really no new information. And we will not be hearing item number 10 this evening. I understand we have a couple of students from John Jay in the audience. At some point, probably close about eight o'clock, we'll sign your forms for you. Okay, we'll call you up and get you out of here. All right. So just real quickly, how the meeting proceeds. We have, we're going to start with a decision. That's an appeal or a request where the board's already reviewed it, had public comment on it, and now we now just have to make a decision regarding that one issue. Then we have a couple of public hearings. These are where you as neighbors have an opportunity to comment, where we welcome your comments because we recognize that you know the sites better than we do. And then lastly, are some reviews, which is generally the first time we're seeing some of these requests that have come in for this board to consider. So with that being said, our next couple of meetings are both on Tuesday, so we have Tuesday, November 10th, and December 8th. And we do have one set of minutes to approve from September 9th that had just very, very minor changes. Lisa, I again want to thank you. You did a great job with those minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes of September 9th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
And Tara's going to abstain from. Okay. All right, so we're all set with that. So item number one is a decision. Appeal 3746, Gasland Holding Corp., Gasland Holding 2612 Route 52, Hopewell Junction is requesting a special permit for an expansion of a nonconforming use in order to build a 1,030 square foot addition onto an existing residential structure which is located in a B1 zone pursuant to section 194-123A of the zoning ordinance. Would somebody care to offer the motion?
Okay. Reference to appeal number 3746 by Gasland Holding Corp., seeking a special permit for an expansion of a nonconforming use in order to build a 1,030 square foot addition onto an existing residential structure which is located in a B1 zone pursuant to section 194-123A of the zoning ordinance with a location of 2612 Route 52, Hopewell Junction. Resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer. And whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for an expansion of a nonconforming use in order to build a 1,030 square foot addition onto an existing residential structure which is located in a B1 zone and was built in 1870 pursuant to section 194-123A of the Town of East Fischel zoning ordinance. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 29, 2015, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held public hearings on August 11, 2015, and September 9, 2015, and whereas section 194-123 entitled "Enlargements or Extensions" provides as follows. A. A building or land area, the use of which does not conform to the use regulations for the district in which it is situated, may, upon conformance with the standards and issuance of a special permit by the Board of Appeals at the right in Article 9, be enlarged or extended in an amount which may not exceed 50 percent of the gross area actually occupy such use at the time of the adoption of this chapter or any amendments thereto. The applicant, Gasland Holding Corp., owns a 4.72 acre parcel located at 2612 Route 52 in the Town of East Fischel. The parcel contains Hyatt's Garage, a gas station convenience store, an auto repair shop, and a single-family four-bedroom residence and a separate barn. The applicant is proposing to modernize the existing residence by removal of an existing covered porch at the rear of the residence and the construction of a 1,030 square foot two-story addition, 515 square foot footprint, to the rear of the existing 2,092 square foot residence in order to increase its size. The project also includes conversion of an existing gravel driveway to asphalt and removal of an existing gravel parking lot that serves the residence. No change in the number of bedrooms is proposed, and no changes to the existing gas station convenience store or repair shop are proposed. The proposed project results in a reduction in impervious surface of 0.04 acre. For that purpose of this short environmental assessment form, the project is defined as the 4.72 acre parcel which contains the existing residence. The portion of the parcel alone, Route 52, is located in the general business B1 district. The remainder of the parcel is located in the R1 residential zoning district. The existing residence is in the B1 portion of the site. Single-family residences are not permitted in the B1 zoning district. Therefore, the existing residence is an existing nonconforming use. Article 15 of the zoning ordinance relates to nonconforming uses and buildings. Section 194-123, enlargements or extensions, is recited above. The proposed addition represents a 49 percent expansion. The applicant is seeking a special permit from the ZBA to allow this expansion under section 194-123A. Almost the entire parcel is located in a 100-year floodplain. The residence will be raised to two feet above the floodplain as per chapter 108 of the East Fischel town code. The proposed addition will require a floodplain development permit from the town engineer. No other permits or approvals are required. Water is supplied to the existing convenience store, gas station, and the residence by a well located in the northeast corner of the site, and sewage is handled by a subsurface sewage disposal system located south of the existing residence. The proposed project does not include any new bedrooms. Therefore, no change to the amount of water usage, wastewater generation, traffic generation, or solid waste generation is expected to occur as a result of the proposed project. The existing residence, with their proposed two-story addition, 550 square foot footprint, meets all applicable standards contained in Article 9 special permits, meaning section 194-44, standards for all special permit uses. And the project will comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws, codes, rules, and regulations. In addition, the proposed project results in a slight reduction in impervious surface and continues the existing mixed use of the site, which are consistent with Greenway Connections recommendations. In sum, the site contains a convenience store, gas station, auto repair facility, and single-family residence. The proposed addition represents a 49 percent expansion of the existing residence, and no new bedrooms are proposed. Therefore, the proposed project will not increase the nature or intensity of operations on the site. Also, the proposed addition is at the rear of the existing residence and meets all setback requirements. For the record, the applicant's project engineer, Margaret McManus, submitted to this board a six-page letter dated August 28, 2015, responding in detail to the various comments and questions by neighbors, by their testimony and their email received during the public hearing process. Whereas this is a type-two action under sequer, as it consists of an expansion of a single-family residence with all necessary utilities in place, therefore, no further compliance is required. Now there, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals finds that the proposed addition will fit in with the character of the residential neighborhood abutting this parcel. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant.
Sir, second.
Second.
Norma?
They're saying the floodplain development permit will be required from the town engineer. No other permits or approvals are required, but a building permit will be required. So I don't know if you want to change that.
So Jim, we're going to amend your motion to say a building permit is also required?
[inaudible 00:07:56]
Well, maybe aside from a building permit, no other permits. How about that?
Yeah. Looking for that.
Page, the second page, the third paragraph, at the end of it. Aside from a building permit, no other permits or approvals are required.
Good way to say.
Okay.
Yes. Again.
So with that amendment?
Oh, yeah, amended.
And is Aziz second? Okay. So vote, any other comments or questions? Okay. Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the motion carries. And please pass this copy down to Pam so she has the corrections. All right, item number two is an adjourned public hearing. Appeal 3728 Earth Angels Veterinary Hospital. Dr. Alexander Barrientos and Robert Kodekovi of Veterinary Wellness PC, doing business as Earth Angels Veterinary Hospital, are requesting a use variance in order to create, in order to operate a veterinary hospital at 1 Fort Corners Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, which is in an R1 zone. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, again, there is no new, the applicant's not here this evening. They are, they are working on an application in the Town of Wappingers to be able to move this business there. So is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the appeal so stated? Seeing, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to next month?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. All right, item number three. Appeal 3740, Picard. Michael Todd, representing Joseph Picard, 53 Autumn Chase Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a five-foot sideline variance for an existing pool, a 15-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment, and a five-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-foot by 16-foot shed for which a temporary certificate of compliance has been issued pursuant to sections 194-95 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Again, there is no new information. At our request, the applicant is pursuing a lotline realignment to potentially eliminate the need for the variance. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the appeal so stated? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to next month?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Item number four. Appeal 3750, Earhart. C. Earhart, 15 Ladoo Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow his recreational vehicle to be parked in front of the rear line of his house pursuant to section 194-52.1 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we did have an opportunity to review your initial application. I, in the intervening time, I actually did go out, do a site visit with you.
Yes, you did.
We talked about where on your property potentially was the better fit of putting the recreational vehicle.
Yes, you did.
I was concerned, as I came up the hill, that it is quite distracting to see the RV in the area, on the lower side of your property there, although you did discuss the fact that the potential exists that it could probably be backed up more.
Yes.
But you weren't necessarily sure where your septic was, your septic fields.
I believe I've got a pretty good distance to go.
Okay. All right.
And I just wanted to, I had forwarded some letters, but in the meantime, I got some more, more letters of support.
Okay.
And I just wanted to give you also a map, just so that the board understands where the complaints are coming from, as opposed to where the support is coming from.
Okay.
Can I bring that?
Sure. Come on up. Okay. Based on my site visit, one of the things I would like to note for the board's review and for your information is that this is not a level site by any means. The entire left portion of the site is, has a significant grade difference, dropping down, which makes, you know, the ability to use that site or to hide the RV in the driveway, but more to the left of the house, frankly impossible. There's just not enough room there between the low hanging wires and then the drop in the grade. It just doesn't work on that side. To the right of the house, there are, there's visible rock outcropping. So there is no question in my mind that there is rock on that site. Okay? Making it even probably impossible to go without some amount of excavation for him, for Mr. Earhart to even go beyond the limits of where his existing driveway is. However, on the, screening the driveway from Ladoo Road there is quite, quite mature pine trees that provide pretty significant screening for anybody who would be coming around the curve. And for your information and your reminder, because I know we have a site map here, Mr. Earhart is on a curve in the road there. So he really does have quite an extensive front yard there. He doesn't really have a side yard, per se. He really just has an extensive front yard. And so, you know, but the screening coming down Ladoo, there's, I think it'd be very, very hard for somebody to really be distracted by it or to see it. It's just as you're in the front of the house for a very limited area, maybe about 30 or 40 feet, that there's no screening, but that's your driveway. And, you know, so it's less distracting seeing an RV in a driveway as opposed to seeing it in your front yard.
I want to apologize because I was supposed to get pictures of, I did have the RV moved there.
Right.
I had a friend come up and move it. Can I show you pictures? And I know there'll be people here to speak on that part of it.
Okay.
But if I could show you pictures?
That's fine.
Just so you get an understanding of what it really means.
Yeah, when I was there, the RV was not up top. It was down below. And so what we talked about was actually moving it up so that your resident, your neighbors could actually see.
This is just so you understand. Coming straight, straight, straight up Ladoo Road, that's what you're faced with. Okay?
Just let the board members that way.
Okay. That's what you would be faced with, coming straight up Ladoo Road. My house would be here, and you'd be looking at that. And this is what you would be looking at.
Yeah, if it was driving by.
It does kind of.
You get a sense of the grade difference here, even from the street to?
You're saying if you parked it up by the house.
Right.
What happened is my immediate neighbors, and I'll, and I'll just, I'll let them speak to that. When I spoke to the people that are not totally against me, they, they did tell me that they much preferred it down below, because it just kind of, as it was there, it just kind of went away, like it just wasn't.
But pushed further back, not as close to the road as I saw it.
As we discussed, the furthest back I can go is the best for me. It's certainly safer.
Right, because then it actually, as you're backing it up with your pickup truck, it actually pushes it, you get the road, your truck off the road, too. All right, one additional consideration is the, Mr. Earhart had mentioned that there are batteries in the RV that need to be either removed or.
Conditioned.
That's one of his, his concerns about parking it on another off-site location. And we actually talked about, I think you said there were four batteries?
No, 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 it's, it's $400 worth of batteries.
Oh, okay, all right.
Coincidentally, have, have been damaged just because I haven't had it plugged in. But I could have run an extension cord to it, but I didn't.
Okay, but the weight of those batteries is, they're quite heavy.
I think they're roughly, I think they're 110 pounds apiece.
Okay, I think you had said somewhere between 90 and 100 pounds.
Yeah, I got the shipping label.
So again, for his ability to be able to take those batteries out, you know, keep them charged, and we put them back in, you know, it would certainly pose a burden.
The camper's designed to charge the ba, I would have to buy battery chargers for my, the camper's designed, it has a conditioning system. So I would actually have to buy separate battery chargers as well for them.
So were there any comments or questions for board members?
You're saying if you took them out of the camper, then you would have to.
On top, on top of taking them out, I would also have to continue to charge, if they freeze, they're, they're no good. And the fact that they're, they've been sitting all year.
I'm just asking a simple question.
No, no, no.
That's the issue.
Right, right.
Another, very simply, if I understand your argument, if you park it up by your house, your neighbors closest to you don't like that?
If I park it up on my house, it honestly, it's my camper, where it was last time, it was four feet outside my front door. And my, but my neighbors will speak to that effect of how it looks up top compared to down below. It doesn't bother me.
Okay.
But I'm honestly trying to, trying to do the best.
But that's my understanding, is your neighbors seem not to like that as much.
And we honestly don't mind it. It's more, it's, it would be, it would be more, more convenient, but it's incredibly big. They'll speak to that.
That's what I'm saying. But that's your understanding. That's why you're here for the request.
Yes, yes.
Okay. You said you can move it back further off where you had originally, close to the road on the side?
Down, down below, yeah, yes.
How much further back could you move it?
I would say probably, I just have to check the property line, but I've already gotten, I've already spoken to the neighbor that would be affected, had it been an issue, but probably another 25 or 30 feet.
Yeah, there was a nice flat area back there.
Yeah.
We just weren't sure, when I was out there, Mr. Earhart wasn't concerned about, he wasn't sure where his fields were.
Yeah, and the further back the, it's safer off the road. Vandalism and things like that.
It's less, certainly less distracting. As you're coming up the hill, there's a lot of foliage there. There's a lot of screening there. So it would be much less distracting as opposed to when you're driving past, all of a sudden you're like, what's that doing there? So.
And as we spoke about, my issue now is leveling that spot.
Right.
Once I can level it, I can get it back more.
Right. Okay, so there, unless there are any other comments or questions?
Questions.
Sure.
You going to level that? Are you planning on putting a cement pad or anything like that?
I would, I would like to put something there. I don't necessarily need a cement pad. My problem is, is that between, between the, between a truck and trailer, it's 25,000 pounds. So I'm concerned, I'm concerned about pulling it out in wet weather or in the spring. I don't, I don't necessarily need a pad, but I would certainly want to do like maybe brick tire lanes for it, so that I'm on hard surface, as opposed to burying the thing and making it look terrible. And with that, I also had my intentions, if I get the variance, is to plant foliage, you know, flowering things as reasonably close to the RV as I can to further screen it as they mature.
Get me to my next question. Okay.
That's my intention.
Okay. What I would like to do is read into the record the correspondence that the board has received.
I think there's too many, so just, general script.
Well, there's just a couple. There's only three letters.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, well, okay, so there is, there is a petition that was sent to us by Donald Stammer, 24 Ladoo Road. We, the undersigned, being full-time residents of Ladoo Estates, are not in favor of granting Mr. Earhart of 15 Ladoo Road, a variance pertaining to Town of East Fischel zoning ordinance, parking of recreational vehicles in the residential zones. They establish, this is an established neighborhood. It's a 36-foot, fifth-wheel trailer. And so they're concerned about what it's going to look like and the fact that it would result in a permanent physical change. So, and this is signed by 13 people.
Ma'am, could I just speak to?
Let me just finish this, and then I'll let you speak to it, okay?
Absolutely, yep.
All right, so also received is a letter from Rita Fowler, to whom it may concern. The Earhart family moved into our neighborhood. They have been working on their home since they arrived to continue to beautify their property. The camper, which has been considered a major problem by some, is that the side of the property does not present any, does not present an eye sore in my estimation. I welcome the family and wish them well. Dated September 22nd, there is a dear neighbor. I really don't care where you park your mobile home, as long as it is not on the street. Snow Hill Narrow Street. We won't be at the town zoning meeting. They sometimes go on till midnight. Hope you got to enjoy our neighborhood, get to enjoy the neighborhood real soon. We do offer over 30 years, we do, sorry, after, over 30 years. So this is letter in support. I just can't read the handwriting necessarily. Richard and Bridget Imodio. All right, and then we have a, from a Mr. and Mrs. R. M. Vora, dated 10/13, to whom it may concern. We do not have any concerns about where Mr. and Mrs. Earhart want to park their camper. It is okay with us to have it parked the rear, the front of the rear of the house. We would prefer it to be parked at the bottom of the front lawn of their house, closer to Fox Run where they originally had it. And one more. This is, oh, this is from the same Imodios, but this is now dated October 13th. Okay. Dear sirs and madam, we are residents of 14 Ladoo Road, Wickopee, for over 30 years and are welcoming our new neighbors across the street from us, Mr. and Mrs. Earhart and their three boys. We are very disturbed about the issue being made about their parking their RV and vehicles on their property. This is 2015, and the original drafts in condition of building any dwelling or parking of vehicles in this former farmland should no longer have to be a mandate. I don't even think they had, this is not me, this is the writer. I don't even think they had RVs and boats in those days. We hope this request for a variance will be dismissed, the sooner the better, and restore the peace and tranquility in this secluded beautiful hamlet. There are many cars, boats, or even another RV in the immediate area. No one ever made an issue about it. We love it here, so do most people on this street. All right.
I believe there was one more from another neighbor that was emailed, I believe.
This is all the emails that we've received. Okay, good.
That just, because these are my immediate neighbors.
Okay. This is regarding the variance. This is dated August 20th. All right, this is regarding the variance requested by C. Earhart of 15 Ladoo Road to park his RV in, on front of the rear line of his house. We support his request. There is absolutely no justifiable reason to attempt to stop him from doing so. He has a corner lot and limited options. He has picked the safest place to leave his RV for all concerned, especially his and the neighborhood children. We can't attend the hearing, but hope the board looks past any unreasonable attempts to oppose the variance such as residents who just don't want to see an RV parked anywhere. Okay, and is that signed Alex and Regina's, I hate to say this wrong, but Semafaridis?
Yes.
16 Ladoo Road. So that's your immediate neighbor.
Well, the, all of those letters are, I'm sorry, Fowler, Louisa, Throba, but.
Yeah, okay.
They're all, you know, basically touching my property.
No problem. Thank you. All right.
Can I speak about the?
Yes, you can now have.
Petition? There's just some, some questions that, some points that I want, that I want to bring out. Number four, Ms. Vazini, no longer lives on Ladoo Road. She lives, lives in New Jersey. Number, number 12 and 13, I'm quite confused about because West Hook, 75 West Hook Road is down my road and up a mountain. It's nowhere, it's not in my neighborhood. I don't, I don't know why these people are signing a petition regarding, regarding my camper. They don't, they don't live in my neighborhood. And I suppose it's kind of, a kind of a sensitive thing to bring up, but I spoke to, number one, the gentleman who was, it was signed for, I happen to know him for, for over 25 years, and I spoke to him today. And when I, when I asked him about his opinion of it, he said he had never heard a word about it till I mentioned it to him today. But unfortunately, he's bed bound and wheelchair bound. He can't write. write or, or, or attend meetings, obviously.
So the person who signed it for him--
Does, does have power of attorney, but, but does not live in the neighborhood.
Okay.
But I just, I just want to point that out, that the gentleman that she signed for did, did not, and, 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 and did tell, tell me that, that he didn't have a problem with it, but, but he didn't know about it.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Um, I, 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 I don't, please, I'll let my neighbor speak.
What I'd, what I'd like to do then is ask you to have a seat, and let's just have an opportunity in case any of your neighbors who have not already acknowledged or sent notice to the board would like to speak. So is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from C. Earhart, 15 Ladue Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow his recreational vehicle to be pla- to be parked in front of the rear line of his house pursuant to section 194 dash 52.1 of the zoning ordinance? Yeah, you're welcome to come on up. What I'm going to ask, when you come up, is after you've finished speaking, there's a clipboard on the table over here. We ask that you please print your name, just so that the minutes can reflect your comments. So come on up, and you can speak at the microphone. And just remember, you're addressing the board, not the applicant.
Hello, the board members. And, see, I'm Bridgette Amodio, and I live across the street from Mr. and Mrs. Earhart. And we've lived there for 30 years, and we love it. I have one question. How many signatures do you really need for Mr. and Mrs. Earhart in order not to grant this?
There's, it's not a quantity number. It's the, we're, we're concerned about the comments that the neighbors give us. We'll take that into consideration as we evaluate the request.
I thought it was the immediately surrounding neighbors that would object to something like this. And in this case, there's no one that's objecting to, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Earhart parking their RV either on the bottom of their property or next to the house. And I would prefer on the bottom of the property, near the Pogies' property. And if he puts some kind of a foundation down sooner or later, whenever he's able physically, uh, that's fine with us. We can wait. And it's his problem if the ground is soft and he has issues moving it out. So I'm really horrified that this man is getting such a hard time living in our beautiful Wickapie. And I'd really appreciate it if you would grant his uh, variance request and just dismiss the whole issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I have to sign?
Yeah, see the clipboard at the end of the table there? We just asked that you please print your name there. Thank you. Is there a gentleman in the front here?
Yes. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is, uh, Donald Stammer. I'm a retired dentist. I've been a resident of 24 Ladue Road for over 40 years. I've been, uh, a resident of East Fishkill for most of my life, graduate of Wapinger Central School, the predecessor of Jay and Ketchum. Um, except for education, two years in the service, I've spent most of my life here. And, uh, I do take exception to, uh, having the presence of this, uh, RV here. To start off, perhaps, I have some photographs of the recreational vehicle, uh, both in its first, in both suggested positions. And I didn't use any zoom. It was taken from my automobile. And it was, it is as you would see it as you came up the road and as you're coming down the road. And so they speak for themselves. Um, with your indulgence, uh, if I may, I would like to, uh, read the regulation and, uh, make some comments on the, uh, the five questions on the application that Mr. Earhart had to fill out and his view on the impact on the neighborhood. Uh, the regulation, as you well know, but I will repeat it for all here, uh, the regulation 194 dash 52.1 states that, and this went into effect February 27th, 2014, "A resident owner of a residential lot is permitted to park one recreational vehicle, such as a trailer, boat, camper, or mobile home per lot, in the rear yard only. Recreational vehicles must meet setbacks." Well, Mr. Earhart is, uh, appealing this regulation and requesting an variance. Um, and he states that the reason for his appeal is to be able to park a camper at a location on my property other than the rear of the house. Um, now, it should be noted, and you've already heard this, that this camper is a 36-foot fifth-wheel camper, which is towed by a Ford 350 pickup truck with dual rear wheels. And say that this is an impressive towing package to say the, is, to say the least. I mean, it is. Now, as part of the application process, there are five questions that, uh, Mr. Earhart had to respond to. Uh, question number one was the, uh, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. And he answers this by saying, "My camper will be set back far enough from the road to not cause line-of-sight problems and will meet required setbacks from neighboring properties." Now, I think you can see from those pictures that, um, it's not going to be set very far back from the road. And if you notice, the grade on the lower part of the property is fairly substantial for backing that up. And, um, in my opinion, and the opinion of the, uh, signatures on the petition, is that it will certainly alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will not produce, and it will produce, an undesirable change and a detriment to nearby properties. The second question on the application was, can the desired result be achieved by some means other than granting a variance? And the answer was that, no, the topography of my property does not allow me to put my camper in the rear yard. Well, you know, I don't have a lot of sympathy for somebody who purchased the property, knowing that the topography would not enable him to park a camper in the rear yard and a 36-foot camper at that. There is an alternative. And the alternative that would not require granting a variance would be to simply put this camper in a storage facility. Now, I had a conversation with Mr. Earhart, and we've talked about these issues. And he said that, um, he would probably, because of his physical disability, he would probably, um, put the camper in a campground, uh, for the months of April to October. Well, that's fine. That takes care of that. And, um, so I suggested to him then that he could put it from October to the next April in a storage facility, such as Easy Storage, right here on Route 82 in Hopewell. And I called them. And if you sign a one-year lease, they will rent you a storage facility, safe and secure, for $125 a week. Now, that was with a one-year lease. I suspect it would be probably 10 bucks more or so per month if it's just from October to the next April. So, you know, this, we would achieve the benefit of not having the camper in our neighborhood by simply storing it and, rather than granting a variance. Now, the third question is, is the variance requested substantial? And he says, no, it's just to park my camper in a place other than the rear yard. Well, that place is now the front yard, where it completely dominates the so-called line of sight. And it is not what I would consider a visual enhancement or what the realtors consider curb appeal. And I feel very definitely it will have a negative effect on the neighboring property values. Now, the fourth, um, question was, will the proposed area variance have any adverse effect on the impact on the physical environment, physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or your zoning district? And he said, no, there is no physical change other than a pad to park the camper. Well, we've already found out that that pad is a concrete pad of some sort. And he described it to me in a conversation, is that he would have two concrete, like runways for the wheels. And, well, they're poured concrete. And to support that amount of weight, that certainly is, uh, a permanent impact on the property. And it's more of a property now that it's starting to resemble a commercial property rather than a residential property. Um, fifth question was, was the difficulty that you have with the area requirements of the law created by something you did or proposed to do? And he said, no, my house is built on a hill and cannot access the rear yard with a camper. Well, I don't feel that's a, a reason to grant him a variance, since Mr. Earhart was well aware of the location and topography before he purchased his home. And it is, as they, um, refer to it under the auto rules, it is a self-created hardship, since he acquired the property, knowing the existence of the topography, and it is not sufficient grounds for granting a variance. So in summary, pardon me while I collect my notes here. Uh, well, in summary, I feel that granting the variance will produce an undesirable change in the character of a well-established 50-year-old neighborhood and would be detrimental to the value of nearby properties. The presence of a 36-foot fifth-wheel trailer in the front yard of the Earhart residence would be aesthetically displeasing and counter to the intent and spirit of regulation 194 dash 52.1. In addition, a pad on which to park the recreational vehicle would result in a permanent physical change, inconsistent with a residential neighborhood. So I thank you for your attention, your indulgence, and, uh, wish you a good evening. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Can you please sign in, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Come on up.
Can you print your name, please?
Hi, I'm Renata Poggi. I live at 11 Ladue Road, which is the house, uh, right below Mr. Earhart's. Um, I sympathize with Don Stammer. I've known him for years. But I, I don't have any problem with the camper. I didn't, when it was, uh, parked as far back as it could go before. Just wanted you to know that I didn't have a problem with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Print your name, please.
My name is, excuse me, David McCormick. Uh, my wife and I, Jean, who's also on the, signed the petition with it at 40 Ladue Road. That's three houses up from, uh, Mr. Earnhardt. I, uh, it's my understanding that the, uh, town of East Fishkill passed this ordinance basically to protect our property values and our quality of life in our neighborhoods. And I think that's worthy. And I would like to see it, in this case, enforced, because this is not going to be good for the neighborhood. It's going to be, I think, as, uh, Don Stammer said, it's going to be a very visual intrusion. It's going to have an impact. And I am opposed to the granting of variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Stammer, please print.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to comment, uh, again, on the, uh, on the signers of this petition. I didn't want you to think that I was loading this up with, um, you know, people that didn't exist or didn't, weren't against the variance. Um, one of the people that, uh, Mr. Earhart mentioned was Mary Lou Vazini. She was still a resident when this petition was circulated. And because of the, um, the, um, rescheduling of this hearing, um, she, in the meantime, has moved. But she was vehemently against, uh, granting the variance. Uh, and Mr. Hickman, Ray Hickman, uh, since he is unable to communicate particularly well, his daughter, who has power of attorney, she, in fact, signed for her father.
That's, that's clear to us.
Okay.
She signs it with a POA afterwards.
And then, uh, the other names here on 75 West Hook Road, that's an interesting point. I was going down to get my newspaper early one morning, and there was a jogger coming up Ladue Road. And she called to me and got my attention. And I said, um, you know, I, she told me who she was. And she said, um, "You gonna do anything about that, that camper down the road?" I was somewhat taken aback. Well, it turns out that she runs that route regularly, and she was just appalled that that camper was there in the neighborhood. And she and her husband both are from, you know, it, it, it depends. Is neighborhood just in that immediate area? No, neighborhood is the whole area. And it, it was un-aesthetically pleasing to her. And I'm sure if you tried to do this in Monarch Farms, Warren Farms, which are not in our immediate neighborhood, but they are in the neighborhood, it would not fly. You know, who wants to put an investment, their home, and then to have a place, you know, within a couple of hundred yards of your residence, a 36-foot camper? That's not a small thing. Anyhow, I have my, I have my said, and thank you again for letting me clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sure.
Good evening. I'm Steve Poggi. I've lived in Wickapie my whole life. And I grew up at my mom's house, which is the neighbor to the Earnharts' house. And I now bought the house right next door. Um, I don't know what they pay you guys, but sitting here listening to this kind of stuff, it can't be enough. I'm honestly, I've never been to one of these meetings before, and I'm probably never coming back, but I'm embarrassed to be here. I don't know if you know it, the Earnharts have only been in the neighborhood a couple of months. And the way that the neighborhood has treated them is, is downright embarrassing. It, it just, it's horrible. Um, there's campers everywhere. I'm an insurance agent. I go to people's houses all the time. Driving around, there's campers all over the place. There's boats all over the place. There's all kinds of stuff. So if we want to play zoning police, let's go, you know, we could hand out a thousand zoning violations in East Fishkill, and you guys would be here forever with these variances. So I don't really see what the big deal with a camper is. It's a nice enough-looking camper. If I wanted to go camping, I'd ask them if I could borrow it. And if I got lucky, I'd go camping somewhere with it. But, uh, I just think it's bully-like, the way someone comes into the neighborhood and is then bullied because they have a camper. So the guy likes camping, you know, let it be. As far as property values go, between my house, my mother's house, a building lot that they have, that we have on Fox Run, and I'm in the process of trying to buy a foreclosed house, which is probably really bringing down property values on Ladue, far more than some beautiful-looking camper, because this foreclosed house up on Ladue is a total nightmare. So, which, if I buy the foreclosed house, anybody coming to purchase it will be driving right past the camper. So I really don't have a problem with it. Um, we talk about other neighborhoods. If, our neighborhood used to be an A neighborhood. It's no longer an A neighborhood. It's not a bad neighborhood, but it's no Legends, it's no Sagamore. If you got money, if you're a doctor or lawyer, and you want to go buy a fancy house, there's a lot fancier neighborhoods to go to. And I'm sure they don't let you put campers in Legends, but they probably have it built into their bylaws a long time ago. The, I have no opposition to this camper. My mother didn't mention it, but she has no opposition. If, if the Earnharts have to move this camper closer to their property line with your butts, or my property line with your butts, they could put it right up onto the property line if they want. We don't have any problem with actual variance that way. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Bob Sonderman. Uh, I'm at 19 Ladue Road, which is the house right next to Mr. Earhart's. Uh, I don't have a problem with it. The vehicle is not bad-looking. Uh, I prefer it down at the lower point than the upper point. Uh, I'm willing to assist in helping clear, if we can move it back a little further, that would be nice. But I think that, in the spirit-- But I think that in the spirit of, you know, good neighbors, I think we should welcome Mr. Earhart to the neighborhood and try to make it as comfortable living as possible for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we ask you to sign in, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Earhart, did you want to say anything else?
Could you, could you print, print your last names?
I just, I just also wanted to touch on a few points that were made, just to clarify some things. I, I don't know what, what the value of my truck and trailer, how that plays into anything that, I didn't ask you to assess the value of my, my equipment. Yeah, it's, it's, it's big, but there's, we're a family, we're a big family, and this is what we do. This is how we enjoy our life. There was mention that, that there's, it's a, it's a, it's a steep incline or something, that it's a detriment to other properties. Ms. Drummond, you, you visited the site, and you saw where the camper was parked, where I'm proposing to, to park it. And that's probably, with the exception of the very top, the flattest part of the property. So I don't see the detriment...
No, I agree with you.
I don't see the detriment to, to, to other, 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 other properties, especially if I, if I, if I could. Currently, it's, it's 25 feet from the nose of that trailer to, to the curb. And the tree line goes over the curbing. So, so to say it's a line of sight, it may be a visual, to some people visually unappealing, but line of sight, I, I gave you pictures that were as honest as it days long on, on what you're looking at. And that camper, no way does it block, 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 block the road. As far, as far as me putting, putting my, my unit in storage, I, I cannot and will not pay for, for storage. You know, the April to Octo, to October issue is, I, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to get it, get into my, my personal affairs, but normally, we, we would, we would take, take the unit out traveling. We don't know what I, what I, what I'm physically capable doing right now, so, but, but the, the April to October wasn't a suggestion that, that, well, it'll be in storage somewhere, and then I just have to pay for October to April. That, that's not the case. The quality of life, I don't, I don't understand how my, my, my unit would affect anybody's quality of life, because it's not, we don't camp, it's not occupied while, while we're here. The, the only time it's ever occupied is, is when we're putting things in and out of it as, as, as we're going camping. Nobody sleeps in it. It's not designed to, to be used on, on your property. It's designed to be used in a campground. It doesn't have its own septic system, or, or water supply, or anything like that. Mr. Stammer made reference to, 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 to the, to the woman that was jogging from 75 West Hook Road. If you'd like, I could show you the picture of the, the two boats in her front yard that had been sitting there for five years. And we, we could ask the neighbor, but, but I have pictures of it, and I, and I have a plan on perhaps addressing that issue. The, but, but, but the, the other thing is, is that it's been said that, that my camper in particular is, is this incredibly offensive thing. If, if you go through, through my neighborhood, I, I was fortunate enough, I'm fortunate now to have direct neighbors that, that are neighbors, that are friendly neighbors. My, my old neighborhood, we, there were several of us that had campers. I, I understand the way things work. If there's no complaint made against you, there's no complaint to be had. I was lucky enough in my last house to not have a, any complaints. And I'm the same way. We're, we're not going to get into the fact that several of my neighbors have boats on Ladue Road that, that are not. The house at the very end has a 36-foot camper parked right on the side of the house, and it's been there for 15, the gentleman's has passed, but for 15 years or better. So, so to, to say that my house is this, this, this terrible, when you came, I was, I was putting up a swing set. We spoke, that, that structure has been removed, because I don't want to upset the neighbors. I want, I want to do things right. I, I thought that I was doing it right, and the, the direct neighbors thought it was a great thing. You suggested, listen, maybe you need a, I don't want to do that. I don't want to get a variance. I, I just want to build it where it's supposed to be, and, and be done with it. But I'm, I'm not trying to, to create havoc for anybody, but I, I think it's a fairly unfair to say, or incredibly unfair to say that, that my camper in the town of East Fishkill is this big problem. As, as, as Mr. Poggi said, there's, 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 there's boats and campers everywhere. But, but the difference is that those neighbors are tolerant of what a family does with, with their free time, which is camp. So, so that, that, unless you have anything further for me.
Nope.
Yeah, I, okay.
Go ahead, you go.
I'm looking at your map. It says Ladue Road, and there's a second road.
It's a, it's a loop.
It's, it's, it's a loop, intersects itself.
No, it says Ladue Road.
It's a loop.
Oh.
Sorry. Ladue Road goes up, and it's a loop.
Okay, so, so basically, you have a corner lot, which is basically, you've got two front yards, I mean, or whatever you want to call it.
We, we don't know what, what...
He has no side yard.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come here, I'm gonna, in the future, I'm gonna ask for, for interpretation of what I have, because I don't know.
Okay. Well, again, looking at it up here, it looks, because there's Ladue Road, which loops around, and so unfortunately, you have two front yards, which basically narrows down your backyard considerably, and I wanted to make it as part of the record, that you have a very, very small backyard, if you want to really look at the, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a corner lot, the way it is structured.
And the topography difference from the top part of this lot, okay, around the loop of the road here to over here is probably 30 feet.
It's gotta be more than that.
Well, yeah, from, it's gotta be at least 30 feet difference from here to here, and it's not that far a distance. So really behind, the only really level area where we actually talked about moving the swing set that he was building at the time was just immediately in the backyard here that was...
Which I would have to clear out 15, 40-year, 45-year-old trees, and put about 70 yards of filling.
The rock outcroppings that were visible in, on his lawn there were clearly, there's clearly rock there. So, yeah, so in addition to the fact that he has very limited rear yard, the topography of it really makes it impossible for him to be able to put it anywhere else on the yard.
Okay, I just want to make it part of the record.
And, and just, so, so, you know, the, the unit was just moved this weekend, so, so it's back up where you suggested. So if anybody wants, wants to come take a look, I'm more than happy to show you. The bumper is, is dug into the grass right now.
Okay.
Because I want, I wanted to try to get my, my truck, I can't unhook it. I'm physically incapable of doing it. So, so I depend on other people. But, but to get the truck as far off the driveway, and, and there's no way it's, it's going up that hill.
No.
And I, and I don't know that it would meet the setbacks if it got up there anyway, so.
Well, my concern is what exactly are we asked to be approved? Don't we need to know how far off he's going to put it? Not just a request in the front yard, but how far off we approve this, or we're going to give it proper consideration, one way or the other? We need to know how far...
That it needs the setbacks?
Yeah.
If he's going to be putting...
Can you repeat what he said, between here and where?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sort of...
Move closer to your microphone.
...train of thought here. My concern is, we don't have enough information as to what he's actually requesting. Just to put the camper in the front yard is too broad. That could be anywheres. So I think we need a very specific request that is going to be, you know, 25 or 30 feet from the, I don't know what direction that is, the...
Beginning of the street.
Is that the east line, the east property line, and maybe whatever it's going to be? He said 25 or 30 feet from...
Can I make that specific request right, right, right now?
That's fine.
So that, so that it's on the record, that, that, you know?
Well, we need that. And then, also then to clarify, Dr. Stammer had mentioned about the concrete being put in. I was under the impression when you spoke that it would be concrete blocks.
Just a hard surf, whether it be brick, or, or, or poured concrete, or, or, you know, I like the look of bricks. I mean...
Well, I think that makes it easier in the future, if you move or something, for somebody to remove it, so it's not there permanently. But I would like that to be a definite part of your request as to what you want, because, and you're not asking for any kinds of structures, and you're agreeing that if something happens, you're going to do screening with landscaping and stuff, correct?
My, my intention is, is to put plantings down, down there to, it's already completely screened on one side.
Again, without any indication of what's going on, is that, that may be subject to our condition of any kind of approval, if you get it.
Okay, on this, in his application, he just gives us the, the property, and he does provide some survey measurements here, so where he is proposing the camper, I mean, it's, there's not a specific measurement there, because again, there's no hard surface there yet, but it's at least, it appears to be at least 30 feet away from the side yard.
And, but how far from the front yard?
Well, that's, that's what he's talking about now. When I was there, it was pretty close to the front yard, and we had a conversation about his, looking to see if he could push it further back. And he's now said on the record that it would be at least 25 feet back.
Okay.
At, at the very least, 25 feet back from the road, but my, my intention is to go even further back, just, just, you know, it's, you know, financially, I have to do this too. I have to just level, level that, that part of that ground, just raise one side about six inches. And again, I depend, I depend on other people, unfortunately. I, I can't physically do it.
All right, so, all right. Yes, any other questions?
Again, again, as was pointed out, you're looking for a solid structure, whether it's bricks, or gravel, or concrete...
Well, it's a patio.
Or a pad.
It's a patio. Patio, what's it called, Mary?
I would call it a pad to park it on.
Okay.
Okay, because if you're talking about two tracks to put the...
Big pavers.
Pavers.
That too. You can't just, he has to get from the, if he was approved, to get to his pad, he has to drive on something, otherwise, when the, in the spring, when you have the frost melting, you'll sink.
Correct. So, so I'm trying to understand which, whether it's going to be a pad, or a driveway, or a...
I, I, how, how this all came about is, is I actually called the highway superintendent because my, my intention was to put a driveway, it wasn't a driveway, I was, he clarified it. I wanted to make something go in at, at the bottom of the property to park this camper. He, he said, check, check, check with the, the, the building department, because if you put, if, if, if I were to pour a pad of concrete, I have to meet the setbacks to the sideline. So, so that's how this all came about, that, that they, that, then I, then that's how, when I was told that the, that the law changed in 2014. So, so I immediately applied for the variance. My original intention, yeah, yes, I, I wanted, I wanted to pour a concrete pad that, that was 10 feet wide, because it's just, a 36-foot fifth-wheel is, 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 you know, to, to park it, it, it doesn't just park on a dime. It takes, it takes a little bit. So if you had a 10-foot pad that, that you could play with, and then, you know, once you get it on there, you get it centered kind of thing. And also, I'll, I'll be very honest with you, if I, if I could put some kind of a, a thing under the camper, it would certainly would, would, would be beneficial to me. But, but I, I want to do what is, what, what the board says to do. It would be beneficial to me in as much as for rodents. We, 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 when we're as a camp, we do the, do the best we can, but, but unfortunately, if you're parked on, on, on a non-solid surface, you have, you have more, more chance for rodents to, to, to try to navigate into it.
Speaking to the highway department, they won't let you put a driveway there.
He said, he said, he said you could absolutely could do that, because it's not a driveway, it's a pad.
No, I mean, coming out to the road.
Yes, you could, yes. Because you're not using it as a driveway. In other words, you're not, it's not your daily, if I, if I were to remove this camper from this, from this spot, which I'll be honest, which is, it's not our intention in the next 50 years, we, we just upgrade. But if I were to remove the camper, I, I wouldn't be, I would have to get a permit to, to use it as a driveway.
Okay.
But that, that's not my intention.
You didn't have it as a driveway.
And it's very inconvenient to, to be a driveway where it's located.
Yeah, it's not anywhere near your, your door.
It's some walk.
Right.
So, again, for the record, the access to this camper, let's say, if it is approved, would be through the Ladue Road and not from your gravel driveway? Is that correct? It won't be from your...
He doesn't have a gravel driveway anymore.
Well, again, it says gravel.
It's, it's a blacktop driveway. No, no, it would be from Ladue Road.
Okay, so this camper is not being accessed for exit and entry from the blacktop driveway, but it's only being accessed from the Ladue Road directly?
It, it, yeah, yeah.
There's, there's no connection between the, what your, what might be a pad here and your, and your driveway.
Correct. There's no, no connection.
There's no physical way to, I mean, that's one heck of a climb to get up that.
Again, the thing is, I'm on, I, I wasn't there, I didn't do a, a site visit, but looking at the topography and the, and the map in front of me, because I just was trying to figure out if you're going to make a, let's say, you...
No, no, that's no...
No, you can't exactly answer.
No, no.
Eventually, I mean...
Just, just, I, I back it in.
Okay, back.
You have to back, you have to back it in.
I just want to make it clear for the record.
Okay, so can I suggest that we close and reserve?
Is there anybody there?
I've asked multiple times, so. Can I...
Motion opposed to public hearing.
And reserve decision.
Reserve, yes. Certainly. I mean, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we will make a decision at the next meeting.
So, thank, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
All right, have a good evening. All right, for any of the students who need a form signed, if you want to come up, anybody at the table here can sign it for you. Come on up, we can all sign it.
What meeting?
All right, what meeting were you at?
Zoom board.
Thank you.
Didn't expect a test when you came over.
No, I didn't.
You had to check your notes.
There you go. You guys need a form signed?
They're enjoying it so much, they don't want to leave. Getting up here so slow.
Which one do you want to join?
Ooh, you actually filled this one out. You get extra credit.
Put a gold star on it, Tom.
You also joined in?
Yes.
Which college class is this?
It's Rivers, it's fishing school.
A pig. Who is it?
A pig.
I have a college.
That one, sure, pigs?
Pig, it's called pig, yes.
I wouldn't even know that. I know. Just kind of thought East Fishkill Town Hall.
How would you go to the last address?
I don't know the address, sorry. Yes, Pam, she'll tell you whatever Town Hall's address is.
Take care, guys.
Okay.
All right. For the rest of you, thank you for your patience. All right, let's move on. Item number five, Appeal 3618 Meyer. William C. Meyer, Forest Spring Meadow Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 45-foot rear line variance for a proposed 11-foot by 8, by 16-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, this is an issue where there is a dispute between property lines, the rear property lines specifically for Mr. Meyer, and they have been in court, actually, in having their title companies resolve the issues. We did get correspondence from both Mr. Meyer and from the neighbor, saying that they are still in court and that they are requesting a six-month adjournment at this point. So do I have a motion to...
Move it to April 2016.
Correct.
Okay. So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I should just say, is there anyone here who wishes to make any comment on this? Okay, now your motion. Six-month adjournment?
Yeah, three, April 2016.
Second? And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number six, Appeal 3741 Rizzi. All right, item number six, appeal three seven four one Rizzi, Francis Rizzi, fifteen Cavello Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for an existing addition and a twenty-three foot front line variance for a ten-foot by ten-foot gazebo which is located in front of the residence of her home pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Certainly.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Good evening?
Good evening.
All right, so we did have a chance, the board did have a chance to review your application and resolve a couple of issues with you, so to the best of your knowledge, the addition was put up probably thirty-some odd years ago, and, you know, not knowing what the requirements were at that time, and so, and also, the gazebo was put up, I'm not quite remembering, around the same time?
Around the same time.
Okay, all right. And so, it's, you haven't gotten any complaints, it's just at this point, you just need to clean up the issues on your property. So, is, are there any comments or questions from board members?
You had a shed over the property, has that been removed?
Yes, we, thank you, we did talk about that, they did agree at the last meeting that they were going to remove that.
Yeah, it was taken down a few weeks ago.
It's gone.
Okay, yeah, you told us the addition was probably put up in nineteen eighty-three, so again, it's, it's been there for quite a while. It's the only other thing I think we should get on the record, so. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Ms. Rizzi, fifteen Cavello Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for an existing addition and a twenty-three foot front line variance for a ten-foot by ten-foot gazebo located in front of the rear line of her home? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Certainly.
Okay. All in favor? Sorry, I just wanted to be sure that I got all the issues on the record here. So, closed and...
Appeal number three seven four one for Francis Rizzi, it's a five-foot sideline variance for an existing addition and a twenty-three foot front line variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot gazebo which is located in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. At fifteen Cavielo Road in Hopewell Junction, it's a R1 zoning district. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a five-foot sideline variance for an existing addition and a twenty-three foot front line variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot gazebo which is located in front of the rear line of her home pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven. Whereas this action is a type-two action under SEACRA, no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on September thirtieth two thousand and fifteen, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October thirteenth two thousand and fifteen, whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the addition, as the addition and gazebo have been there for approximately thirty years. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the structures are already existing. The variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood for the reasons stated above. Now therefore, be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Francis Rizzi for a five-foot sideline variance for an existing addition and a twenty-three foot front line variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot gazebo pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of this, of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Good night.
Good night. All right, item number seven, appeal three seven five one, Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. Orange County Partnership Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless is requesting a special permit for a commercial telecommunications antenna and a four-point-five-foot by eight-foot equipment area to be located at the Stewart Shop, five fifty-one State Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-six of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Certainly.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second, Barbara?
Yes, I said second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two members who are recusing themselves on this, so they're gonna step out, and the board does have an alternate member, so we're going to ask Mary Semenara to join us for, for this, you can cover for Tara for this one?
Okay.
All right, thank you. And the applicant has provided some new materials, so if you don't mind, oh, you got one ready, pass these on to John and Pam. Okay, so I have an open public hearing. All right, so we did have an opportunity to review your request last month, we were talking about the Stewart Shop on Route eighty-two opposite Joe's Dairy Barn. What you are proposing is to be able to help better the cell service in the area, you're actually proposing what probably will be the equivalent of a five-foot, and, well, a five-foot chimney-like looking structure to go on the roof of the existing Stewarts, of which approximately two feet of that is gonna be the actual antenna, but then the rest is to just get it to the appropriate height. In addition, you're, and we talked about the fact that it would probably be a gray or a whackish color as opposed to not the red that you showed us in example last month, and so that it would blend in, really blend in with the materials of the roof and blend in with the, with the material behind there. But then next to the building, we talked about this very small four-and-a-half-foot by eight-foot area that will be protected by bollards or some other material to be able to set aside the equipment that you need to be able to have the equipment on top of the roof work.
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to offer?
The, two new things, I guess, the, the materials that I passed out to the board today, I provided you with photo simulations, and I have some extras if there's any members of the public who wanted to look at them.
What you can do, Ashley, why don't you put them on the table in this way, if anybody would like a set while we're discussing it, they can get up and get them.
So, what this shows is, the first page is just an aerial photograph of the site, it also has a number one that shows the location of the angle of photos that are taken later in the packet.
Okay.
As we discussed previously, we are looking now to put a stealth concealment unit on the antenna. So, the antenna is normally a canister shape and, and as you mentioned, is on a pole that elevates it up enough so that we can actually provide service. The stealth unit is just a sort of chimney-looking pipe that slides over the entire unit pretty easily, it's a lighter material, so it allows the signal to still pass through, but it conceals it a little bit more, so it looks more aesthetically pleasing and blends in a little bit more with the building. The second sheet of this photo simulation is, page P1 is the existing store as it looks today, and then there are sort of two pages after that that have two different color options. The board had requested that we choose a color that blended a little bit better with the Stewart, so the first page ones with the, the color of the awning on the existing Stewart, the second page is the tan color that blends with the building itself, we're happy to, to paint it whatever color the board prefers.
My preference is the first one, you hardly see it.
Yes, it would be, sort of, it would blend in with the foliage behind, both in leaf-on and leaf-off conditions, so that black is certainly something, or the very dark brown color is certainly something we would be happy to do to help conceal this.
And thank you for providing the photographs, one of the important things to note is, there is actually a dish on there, on the roof of the Stewart that I never even noticed before, and, you know, so for those of you who are familiar with the, the site already, and if you've seen that dish, the tower just probably doubles the height of the dish, it's really...
And these are a smaller, more unobtrusive way to provide service without having to put up another, you know, very large facility in the area, so this does help us with some of the capacity issues that we have in your community in terms of providing better service to our customers. The other issue we had discussed was the placement of bollards in the parking area around the equipment area. If you turn in the plans that I provided to page C2, the equipment area on the ground is fenced and would be secured to prevent any vandalism or anything of that nature, but we have installed a couple of proposed bollards in front of that that would still allow the gates to open, to be accessed and serviced, but would also prevent vehicles from hitting that fence.
Yeah, we were concerned, we did mention, Barbara did raise the, the fact that trucks do park along the side there, and so she was concerned about accidentally them, you know, backing into your equipment and not wanting to disrupt it, so.
Of course, and actually, it happens that when I spoke with the engineer, he said we normally put them in, and for some reason, they were omitted from the plans.
Oh, okay.
So, they're concerned about the same thing, making sure to protect their equipment, so. So, they appreciated that being, being pointed out to them. Otherwise, I have no other changes, I do, if the board would like it, have an updated structural report that just confirms that the additional stealth unit that we're placing on the roof, or proposing to place on the roof, doesn't change their structural analysis that this building is structurally sound and this won't cause a problem.
That would be great, we certainly would want that for the record. Can you just, again, because we're in a public record here, can you help just state for the record, the, the people who are gonna benefit most from this are the people who are within X amount of a radius of this structure?
Sure, so the benchmark that we use is about a thousand feet, it's a little bit further for people who are outside, people are in cars, people who are sort of milling about in that neighborhood, those outside of the dairy stand and all of that. But in terms of in-building service, it would help mostly that immediate area. What it does is take some of the pressure off of our existing large towers, so that the towers are available to help people in other parts of the community. So, it's kind of a dual benefit in that manner. I do, there are a number of businesses and residences, a dentist office, a deli, a pizzeria in that location, in that area, so those would be the main benefactors of that project.
You have East Fishkill provisions is right there, yeah.
Exactly, exactly, and of course, the Stewart Store itself, and the, I think this one does have picnic tables sometimes outside, if I'm not mistaken, oh, maybe not, but they, in any event, it would be customers there, anyone in that general neighborhood who needed cell service, and would also allow us to move some traffic back onto the large tower in the area. The macro cell is at, is called Hopewell Junction, it's a larger tower that other folks would be able to use.
Comments or questions from board members?
The comment that I have is driving past there, I'm not even sure that anybody would see this, as you're driving, I guess, north on eighty-two, it would be totally invisible, so, and I think in the black color or the dark brown, it would definitely be really hard to see.
Right. I, I agree with you, really, from the picture, it's...
Yeah, it's invisible.
It's practically impossible, I'm like, where is it? All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against Arnie County, Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless, requesting a special permit for a commercial telecommunications antenna and a foot, four-point-five-foot by eight-foot equipment area to be located at the Stewart Shop, five fifty-one State Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
And reserve decision.
No, I believe we...
Got one?
So, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll read it. This is, I know, this is appeal number three seven five one for Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, for a special permit for a commercial telecommunications antenna and a four-foot...
It's actually four-point-five.
Four-point-five foot by eight-foot and equipment area to be located at the Stewart Shop, five fifty-one New York State Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-six of the zoning ordinance.
Four-point-five is four feet, six inches.
The top says just four feet, John.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the top of the document.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. It says four feet, six inches?
Four.
No.
Four-and-a-half feet.
Four-and-a-half.
Four-point-five feet.
Whereas the applicant had applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for an expansion of a non-conforming use in order to build a...
Oh, this is...
Yeah, go read the top.
For a special permit for a commercial telecommunications antenna and a four-and-a-half-foot by eight-foot equipment area to be located at the Stewart Shop, which is located in a B1 zone pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-six of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the legal notice was, is the rest correct? Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on September twenty-ninth two thousand and fifteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October thirteenth two thousand and fifteen, and whereas section one ninety-four dash seventy-six Commercial Communications Towers and Antenna Installation provides as follows, the zoning board of appeals is authorized to grant a special permit for the commercial communications towers and antenna installations, provided that the board finds that the application meets all the general conditions of Article Nine and further meets all the applicable conditions set forth in section one ninety-four dash seventy-seven through one ninety-four dash eighty-four. The applicant submitted a comprehensive application supplemented by twelve tabs with multiple professional drawings covering every facet of the proposed project. Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless proposes the location of one unmanned public utility personal wireless service facility on the above premises. The applicant proposes to install a single cylindrical small cell antenna, twenty-four-inch tall by fifteen-inch diameter ballast mounted on the roof of an existing six-foot tall, sixteen-foot tall Stewart Shop's convenience store at a maximum height of twenty-three feet above ground level. And, number two, the installation of electric and telecommunications equipment at grade immediately adjacent to the building wall of a proposed six, four-and-a-half by eight-foot concrete pad and one GPS antenna. The convenience store and lands are owned by Stewart Shop's Corporation and are currently improved with a roof-mounted dish antenna which measures twenty feet above ground. This one-acre premises is located in a B1 general business zoning district at the intersection of New York State Route eighty-two and Lake Walton Road. Upon completion, the applicant asserts that this proposed facility will provide much-needed wireless network bandwidth and improve performance to the area immediately surrounding the intersection of New York State Route eighty-two and Lake Walton Road. Due to the distance between users in the immediate area and the current wireless facility serving the area, the applicant's network is under significant strain and Verizon Wireless's existing macro sites are not able to adequately satisfy the existing and emerging demand throughout this portion of the town of East Fishkill. Verizon Wireless is considered a public utility for land purposes under New York law citing Cellular Telephone Company versus Rosenberg, eighty-two New York, second, three six four nineteen ninety-three, and a provider of personal wireless services under the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, the TCA. Verizon Wireless's microcell equipment will be in operation twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Verizon Wireless hereby seeks a special permit from the Town of East Fishkill Zoning Board of Appeals for its application as directed by the Town Building Department under the East Fishkill Zoning Code, section one ninety-four dash seventy-six. This board notes that the town zoning ordinance covering commercial communications towers and antenna installations specifically states the site plan review by the planning board is not required for projects approved under the cell tower law. East Fishkill Zoning Code, section one ninety-four dash seventy-eight A, provides that the zoning board's review here and under includes a review of the elements of the site plan and shall be deemed to satisfy the requirements of section one ninety-four dash twenty-four C, site plan review of the zoning ordinance, without the need for any separate site plan review by the planning board. In choosing the Stewart Shop building located at five fifty-one New York State Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction, New York, for a potential microcell location, the applicant's usual two-step process was followed. The macro cell site currently serving the area, Verizon Wireless's Hopewell Junction Beta Sector facility located at five fifty-one New York State Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction, New York, reaches maximum... Is that correct? The Beta Sector facilities, not located, same address? The Beta Sector facility is currently located at the same address? All right, reached its maximum capacity in two thousand and fourteen and is currently overloaded and provides reduced performance to the Verizon Wireless telecommunications customers being served by the site. The area surrounding five fifty-one New York State Route eighty-two is comprised of numerous residential houses as well as several businesses. This traffic hotspot area is shown in tab eight as the targeted coverage area of the proposed microcell. The proposed microcell will provide localized coverage to this area and deliver immediate relief to the existing overlay macro network. network. Verizon Wireless's proposed new microcell communications facilities will consist of the components described above, and access to the communications facility will be by the existing driveways into the premises from Route 82 to the south and Lake Walton Road to the east. The total project area is a minimum portion of the one acre parcel, limited to a 6 foot by 6 foot lease area on the convenience store roof and a 4 and 1/2 foot by 8 foot ground level concrete pad and lease area. The total project area of the proposed project equals approximately 0.1% of the total area of the property. The proposed communications facility is unmanned and will be visited for routine maintenance purposes approximately 1 to 3 times per month only as needed. As such, the project will not have any impact on existing water and sewage services. In addition, neither pedestrian or vehicular access to the premises will be impacted. In sum, the proposed communications facility complies in all material respects with the requirements of the East Fishkill Town Zoning Ordinance. One, site plan. The applicant has provided a zoning site plan that documents compliance with all applicable requirements of the Town Zoning Ordinance Section 194-76. See Tab 12. Two, co-location. The proposed project generally serves the Town Zoning Ordinance's preference for the co-location of antenna installations on existing structures over the construction of entirely new telecommunications towers. See Town Zoning Ordinance Section 194-79 and 194-82D. The proposed telecommunications facility will not be placed within the town's overlay scenic areas within 3,000 feet of the intersection of Route I-84 and the Teconic State Parkway, Town Zoning Ordinance Section 194-78B. Four, co-location application requirements set forth in Town Zoning Ordinance Section 194-79B. A, completed permit application, Section 194-79B1. An engineer's structural report, Section 194-79B3. A radio frequency emission safety report, Section 194-79B4. Documentation of landowner consent, Section 194-79B5. Architectural elevations, Section 194-79B6. Environmental assessment form, Section 194-79B7. Site drawings, Section 194-79B8 and 5. The proposed ground level equipment will not encroach on the required 50 foot rear and side setbacks required by Town Zoning Ordinance Section 194-84D5. The facility's microcell antennas and supporting equipment will not be noticeable to patrons of the Stewart Shops convenience store, the traveling public, or nearby property owners. The communications facility proposed has been cited to have the least practical adverse visual effect on the environment, in particular, local residential areas, and any resulting impacts may properly be considered as minimal in nature and scope. Approval of this project will enable Verizon Wireless to continue to provide an adequate and safe level of handheld wireless telephone service to a busy area of East Fishkill within the confines of applicable technological limitations and in compliance with all applicable land use requirements. Such approval will also be in the public interest in that it will allow Verizon Wireless to comply with its statutory mandate to build out and operate its network and provide local businesses, residents, and public service entities with safe and reliable wireless communication service. For the reasons set forth herein, this board submits that this project complies in all material respects with the special permit requirements of the Town Zoning Ordinance and hereby grants the special permit under Section 194-76 for a commercial telecommunications antenna and a 4 and 1/2 by 8 foot equipment area, subject to one condition: The antenna color shall match or complement the existing roof color. This is a type 2 action under SECRA as it consists of a small antenna mounted on an existing structure such as the building herein. Therefore, no further compliance is required. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals finds that the proposed addition, the proposed telecommunications antenna and equipment area will foot in with the character of the residential neighborhood abutting this parcel. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, before we get a second, John, we need to confirm, yeah, there's on page two, the second paragraph from the bottom. We talk about an overloaded tower that's at the same address. So I can't imagine, do you know what the address of the nearest tower is that you're...
I can't believe that.
It could be as close as the wreck or something.
It's located at 888 State Route 82.
The Beta Sector Facility?
The Hopewell Junction Facility.
882.
888, she said.
883.
Not 82.
I'm getting confused with 82, yeah.
Yeah, no, 888, New York State Route 82. So with that correction, Barbara, on page two, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hold on, hold on. Let me read this, stick to my guns here. Jim?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right. So you guys, you're all set.
Barbara gets a rest.
Jim?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, item number eight, appealed, oh, thank you. Let's get, let's get Aziz and Tara back. Let me just read the introduction for the next one. We still have a quorum. Item number eight, Appeal 3752 Sikowski, Joseph and Marie Sikowski, Seven Quail Run, are requesting a 14 foot sideline variance for two existing sheds, one 10 foot by 12 foot and one 8 foot by 8 foot pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, welcome back.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. All right, so we did have a chance to review your application last month. You originally were in requesting one, and then when we looked at your survey of your property, it appears that there were actually two sheds right next to each other. They had the same sideline issue.
Right.
So we advertised for both and, you know, advised your neighbors that we were actually looking for both. The one, the first one that you identified, you told the board really was too old and too big for you to be able to move it with any ease. We did talk about the fact that there's a fence along the property line on that side.
Yes.
So there is some screening for your neighbors in terms of the visual impact. Can you just refresh my memory? How long is that, how long have the sheds been there?
It's pretty close to 20 years.
Okay. So with that being said, are there any comments or questions from board members?
Number...
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the appeal from Joseph and Marie Sikowski, Seven Quail Run, requesting a 14 foot sideline variance for two existing sheds, one 10 foot by 12 foot and one 8 foot by 8 foot pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Barbara read the last one. She's...
She worked hard.
She worked hard on that one.
Was the order written or not, John, do I...
Okay, this is a request for Joseph and Maria Sikowski for a 14 foot sideline variance for two existing sheds, one 10 feet by 12 feet and one 8 feet by 8 feet pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Allison, whereas the applicant has applied for the zoning board for a 14 foot sideline variance for two existing sheds, one 10 feet by 12 feet and one 8 feet by 8 feet pursuant to Section 194-107, whereas this action is a type 2 action under SECRA and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 30th, 2015, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October 13th, 2015, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as they have been there for approximately 20 years, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means that the structures are already existing, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood for the stated reason above. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Joseph and Marie Sikowski, Seven Quail Run for a 14 foot sideline variance for two existing sheds, one 10 foot by 12 foot and one 8 foot by 8 foot pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Your second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. All right, item number nine, Appeal 3753 Sienna, Anne P. Sienna, 624 South Hillside Road, Wappingers Falls, New York, is requesting a 3 foot rail line variance for a proposed 20, sorry, 10 foot by 20 foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we did have an opportunity last month to review your application. You have a quite unique situation in that you have, you're in Hillside Lake and you have one lot, but now you've acquired another lot that kind of creates an L shape.
Well, I originally bought it that way.
Right.
There was two parcels and it was one family-owned, so when I initially wanted to buy the other shed, I went to the board to see what I needed to do, and they said I had to have the house on the property that the shed goes on to.
Right.
So I did go to Poughkeepsie and merged the properties.
Right. So it was two separate lots.
Right. And it's an L.
You did take the time, right, it's an L. You don't own the corner, though. That was going to be...
Right, exactly.
So the question came into play as to, as to whether you actually have two front yards or not, but that, given that, we, your discussion with the building department was to put it far enough back in the property to, so that we're really dealing with a rear yard variance issue.
Right. The rear yard variance, it seems to be that the back part of the shed, which is the side of Highland Road, goes to Daniel's property, which I had him take a look at. I believe we're at 27 feet away from his property, so that's where we came up with the 3 foot variance, because it needed to be 30. So there is a small existing shed that was there when I purchased the lot, and originally the letter I wrote was to put the shed in the front of that shed, the smaller shed, the larger one in front of it, facing Highland, and the zoning, she came out, the inspector, Mary, and said that they preferred it behind the small shed.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the only difference in the letter that I had wrote up for asking permission for it. But, so it's set back further into my yard and behind the smaller shed.
Okay. Is there any issue with where the smaller shed is cited?
It predates zoning.
It predates, okay. All right. A question came up, somebody brought to our attention. Do you run an upholstery business out of this?
I don't run an upholstery business. I used to be an antique dealer.
Okay.
And I don't, I have not taken any customers or clients or anything, or I haven't done any physical work except for my own antiques that I kept stored in my basement, which is getting damp. And, you know, besides that, this is a drier area to store them as I can clean them up. I do have a case in the center where I do still sell antiques, you know, but smalls at this point. I, in the future, I may like to get a store again, but I had a store in '07. I closed in Greenwich, Connecticut. This way prior for me buying this property. I've been there three years in December this year.
Okay, so your intention is to use the shed to store antiques?
Store and work, you know, I sanded the top of a table yesterday, and I upholstered a chair that I got at a yard sale for $10. So, you know, I mean, I downed all my spare time.
But are these, is the chair for your own personal use?
Yes.
Or are you going to turn around and sell that chair?
No, I didn't. It's in my bedroom.
And the table, too, that's for your own personal use?
The table actually was a girlfriend that asked me, you know, if I could put it on eBay, but I said I had to clean it up first. So I cleaned it up, so I may...
But your intention is to sell, sell it. We're running a questionable line here about whether you're operating a business.
It's had no intentions...
Let's ask you one more question on that issue.
Okay. I had no intention.
Your girlfriend asked you to sell it on eBay. What are you making ultimately?
I told, I was doing eBay on small things that I can ship of my own nature.
For your girlfriend, are you...
For my girlfriend, I...
Making money on that?
No, I wouldn't be making money. But this...
Oh, for a friend, I mean, that's...
Yeah.
No, and I want to be clear that we get on the record what is going on there, that's all.
Right.
If it's not a business, it's not a business.
Right. My friend asked me how I was doing on the eBay, and she had bought a new table, and this was in her garage, and it was all scratched on top, so I sanded it for her. But, you know, I told her I would try to list it. I didn't list it yet. I found that bigger items are harder to ship and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've been doing a little bit of eBay because, you know, I got stuck in this business of, you know, not having the store anymore, and I didn't want to throw things in auction. I get pennies on the dollar. So, so I basically have a full basement, and I need to clean things up and get things in a drier location also.
When you sell them, though, are you selling them under a business name?
If I...
Are you selling it under a personal name?
Not on eBay. I haven't sold any furniture whatsoever, no upholstery whatsoever.
Antiques.
Antiques. I don't have a store location in the center. I only have a small cabinet, and I haven't sold anything furniture-wise.
I'm not asking about furniture. I'm asking about antiques.
What was the question exactly?
Were you selling antiques out of your home on eBay? Were you selling them in the center? What's going on?
Well, but are you selling them under a business name, or are you selling them under your own personal name?
No, under my own personal name in the center. But the eBay, the eBay is, I don't know how to explain it, but if you know anything about eBay, you'll get, at the end of the year, you'll get a $10.90, $10.99, I think, and then I'll claim that as...
As a business expense or as a personal expense? That's what I'm trying to get at.
It won't be, it won't be an expense. It'll be as an income, but it hasn't been very profitable. It's going to be less than...
But you're not answering the question. Are you claiming...
And I think the difference is, it's one thing, for example, I buy a truck and I don't like the wheels on it. I buy new wheels, and now I want to sell the wheels on eBay and get rid of them.
Right.
I'm just getting rid of personal stuff that I don't want.
Right.
As opposed to going out to yard sales, buying things, and then to around sell them on eBay. That's a business.
Can I do that in my own home?
Not without permission?
I could...
You can't operate a business from your home without a special permit to do that?
A special permit. So I, last month I sold $200 on eBay, so I don't know if that means that I need a permit.
Under a business name or under your, that's what I'm saying, are you...
It's under my name.
Your personal name?
My personal name.
So it's not a business?
It's not a business.
That's, that's what we're trying to get at.
It's under my personal name. There's no, no business name.
Do you have a business name? I mean, do you have a business...
I don't. I had...
It has a center that...
When you say center, what does center mean?
It's a, it's a group of antique dealers in Stamford, Connecticut. I used to have a antique shop in Greenwich, Connecticut until 1907, and that was Putnam Antiques in Detroit.
1907. You look really good for your age. I'm sorry, 2007. I'm sorry. I'm just a little confused. It's all right. Don't worry.
It's a center, like they have the antique center in Opel...
Yes, right, just like right here.
Right here in Hopewell, yeah.
Yes. But like I said, it's only a glass cabinet.
Yeah.
Where I have little small things like ladro and lamonge.
But again, it's there, that's there as a business or that's there as you personally?
That's a personal...
Okay. All right.
It's under my name, and they do all the, they take the tax and all that.
Okay.
They do all the expense. I pay them a rent.
Okay. Or like a consignment or something like that, something like that.
Yeah, it's not even a consignment fee. It's a rental, it's a rental.
All right. So it sounds like we're all pretty clear. You are not operating a business from your...
No, no. I'm a busy, I like to work... No, no, I, I'm a busy, I like to work and I like to keep busy, so I do little, little things.
Repairs and.
Repairs and things, but for my own use.
It's a hobby?
Yeah, it's a hobby.
Okay, just, just wanted to be clear. Any other comments or questions from board members? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against Anne Sienna, six twenty-four South Hillside Road, Wappingers Falls, requesting a three-foot rear line variance for a proposed ten-foot by twenty-foot shed?
Yes.
Yes, can we ask you to have a seat?
Sorry, I'm getting very old, I forgot all the pictures, over fifty pictures.
No problem.
Anyway, I'm Beatrice Windsor and I live next door to Anne.
Okay.
On the corner of that, and I have.
So you're in between her lots?
No, I'm, I'm, you know, there's, there's South Highland Road and there's First Avenue and there's four houses there, and I'm on the outside of South Highland.
Okay.
And my drive, her drive, second driveway goes in back of my, my property.
Got it, okay.
And it's a hundred and fifty, no, it's a hundred by a hundred and fifty, and I've been there since for thirty-one years.
Okay.
I bought the house because I have a disabled son and I brought him there and, anyway. But one thing I did wrong, I didn't get the surveyor. He, the man showed me, he built the house and it was a raised ranch, and then two other people were in there and Anne was the last of three that came in. And we were friends until I mentioned that the water from the second, in Anne's house by the man before had made a big ditch across the top, back, and then slanted it and then came by this low, high, he built a planter, and then it goes, the planter goes to the end, but my property isn't quite near and it goes down, so that water that comes out of that, that straight and, you know, and, well, Anne hasn't got as big a ditch, but it is a ditch, and I tried to explain, you know, that it makes my family room damp. I didn't know this because I lived there for twelve years or so for little old ladies and they, they didn't make any ditches or anything and I never had a damp basement until one day I saw some dampness and I said, oh, and what happened then, I see, I forget. Oh, I know, I went and got a dehumidifier, about, I was there for twelve years and I got, when it rained, and then about two months later, my dog got away from me, my Lulu, and went over to his property and I ran after with my leash, and I saw this big ditch and how it was diverting the, the water from up, way up on top of the hill. I don't have that because in back of my property, I have a, I had a good-sized ditch all the way for like eighty feet from the South Highland Road, and that would take it, take it out to the road and down the pipes. So I never had to worry about that up to there, then there's, I think about twenty feet, something, I didn't measure it, but twenty feet to Anne's property and then the back is Anne's property.
Okay.
Now, they didn't put the ditch there because my, my well is in the back, so when that ditch is there, we can't take any of the things coming from the, from the second houses up from the hill down because all the backyards have their septic systems and we couldn't have that going past my, that's, that's what they explained to me.
Mm-hmm.
Years ago. And anyway, Anne asked me if she could get a shed, and she didn't tell me the size and put it in back, you know, and I said, you know, sure, and I, she, I even wrote, this is hers and this is mine, I just said, I, Beatrice Windsor, and then my address, have no objection to Anne Sienna placing a shed thirty-seven feet from the road, which is half Highland Road. Well, she's got it like eighty-two feet and it's right in my dining room, I like a view, and my deck is right there, and now I see this two big, one big shed and one old shed sitting next to it, and all the trees that she cut down from when she was going to put the shed there, which she didn't put. I came home from, well, my son was in the hospital up in Hudson, and I came home late, and there was a shed in that place and not there, and she said, well, they wouldn't let her, that's what she told me. And I said, well, and I, so I see, I feel closed in, I can't sit on my deck because there's a great big shed, and I hate to tell you this, but she told me she was getting the shed so she could have an antique business, and that is God's honest truth, I have.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me, if you please.
You're addressing the board, please?
I'm sorry.
Please.
But, but that is true, and, and actually she does a very good job, I saw her upholster a chair and she does a nice job, sorry about it, but the thing is, you know, what was more?
So you're concerned.
Everything was different, it was going to be an armor shed and then it turned, she didn't tell me the size, and what I'm feeling is, I feel closed in with all this wood, she's, you know, how big trees have this much and pile them on top of each other in front of the shed, she has all this, this, and now because she didn't get a, a survey and I didn't get it, but I, man went around with me who, who built the house and who had, and he showed me where all the things were, you know, the markers.
Okay.
And now she, she'd be nasty, she puts the, the wood right where she thinks the line is, and she gets this black thing and goes from one marker and then goes through my, my, what do we call it, the water, what would you call that?
That's fine.
I don't know what you'd call it.
The swell?
It gets the water from, and I don't have, I didn't have any water problem until this other business.
Yep.
And I tried, you know, and, oh, about two or three years ago, when this happened, I called Bill from, I went down to see him and then, and I explained, you know, that how she's doing, and he used the word, she's diverting it, and it's against the law, he said, for one person to put water from their property diverted to, and that's what she's doing, because if, my pictures would have shown how, when it comes this way and then this way, and her shed, she has a, I don't know, what would you call it, a platform to go in, because underneath the platform is the ditch that's going down and she doesn't go by her house, she's got it diverted and, and then it goes along this wood, this planter, and then the only place it can go, because my property goes down a little, so it goes to my foundation.
Okay.
And she won't do anything about it, you know, she spends loads of money on cutting trees and then being nasty to me, saying, that's my tree, I'm going to cut it down, it's in my way.
Okay, can I just, can I be clear here?
What?
It sounds like you have a drainage issue, which maybe, it sounds like it was before the shed.
Oh, it was before the shed.
Okay, so that's really not relevant to our reason we're here. All she's looking for at this point is a three-foot variance from her rear line. If she were to move this shed in three feet.
Yes.
She wouldn't need to be here.
Yeah.
So probably make it closer.
So, yeah, it might make it.
Well, I'm going to get a lawyer anyway, because of course, I don't want her diverting the water, that's not fair.
That, that's a separate issue and I appreciate that you have an issue there?
No, I understand, I understand.
I appreciate that, but that's not really why we're here this evening, so.
Well, all I know is I feel closed in with her sheds, two sheds, you look out my dining room window now and what I used to see was nice trees and everything, I don't anymore, I see sheds and wood, and she wanted me to cut some branches down by her, you know, we're right across from the lake, the, the Hillside Lake.
Right.
And she wanted, she, and she did ask me if we could cut a couple of branches so she could see more of the lake, I couldn't see the difference, but I said, sure, go ahead, but now I, what I see, she won't take, that's nothing.
Okay.
And I'm, you know, I'm getting upset, so I'm going to go.
No, 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 it's, I just, I want to be clear.
I've got it, and, but you don't know how nasty she's been to me, and then to deliberately do things like, right, what she thinks is the line, she puts the, the wood, more wood, and now she's got it on top of where one of the markers are.
When you say wood, you mean?
What do you mean by wood?
The tree cut down?
Like a pile of wood?
The tree, when you cut the, she cut all the trees, most of the trees in back of my property where the ditches, in my ditches in the front. And she has a hundred, fifty feet by a hundred, wasn't it something, I forget what it, it's fifty, and so she had, she cut all the trees and that was, she didn't tell me that she was, that's where she told me the shed was going to be, she even said something about the, the, her.
Well, it's real.
About cutting the branches because they'll fall on the shed. And I was all right for the shed being there because I didn't have to sit on my deck or out in my dining room and see it, but it's actually a pretty shed.
Okay, but you heard them say that the building department, zoning enforcement officer wanted the shed put behind the smaller one.
Yes.
So she probably didn't get her original design.
Yeah, and she didn't get the location that she would have preferred and that she probably discussed with you.
It would have been nice to tell me though, so I could either.
Well, sometimes the town.
And she has an awful lot of things in, stored in her shed, it's like a warehouse, so.
Okay.
That's why you have a shed to put stuff.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So, so the question is, is there any way we can make this better or do you just want the shed moved, the, the three feet to where it legally should be?
Of course not, that would be closer to me.
That's what we're trying to, so do you, would you like us to ask her to put some landscaping up, to put some bushes up or something?
If she would just get rid of the wood right there, she's got that whole section she could have put her wood, instead of me seeing all that wood and the sheds.
Do you want some bushes put up? I mean, I, I don't want to make you more closed in.
No, that bushes.
Okay.
Wouldn't help.
Well, if he puts some marverite up in a couple of years, it'll be.
This is a big shed, well, I'm going to get a lawyer anyway for the water, so, even though I don't really have the money.
That's your prerogative.
And I, but I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, and I, it was kind of interesting, I've never been here to, I didn't even know you had to get a paper.
Get a paper.
I'm an RN, so I'm not stupid, I'm just getting a little old.
No, you're, you're absolutely welcome to join us every month.
No, I don't.
Or you can watch us on channel twenty.
Watch us on TV, exactly.
Let me see, did I vote, do I vote for you?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, then I didn't vote for you. I just wondered, I'd like to put the face to who I voted, sometimes I don't know.
Nope, not us.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening.
You have to sign in.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ma'am.
Can you please sign in on the clipboard over there? Thank you, just so we have your name for.
Anybody else?
Is there anybody else?
Just print your name there, please.
Seeing none.
Okay, would, no, no, would you like to come up and?
Well, without talking about the water.
Carefully, please.
I'm, yeah, I'm very careful.
Again, keep, keep the issues to the shed.
Oh, yes, I will, absolutely. I did apologize for not being able to put the shed in front of the smaller shed, and I did make a point to her that it would be to her benefit, that's why I'm here.
Right.
So it's further away from her. I don't want to go where she went, so.
Right.
Basically, I did cut two trees down where I was going to put the shed and then had to move the shed back further, so there is wood piles.
Okay, is there any way that, I mean, we have no control over it, is there any way the wood pile can be moved?
They can be.
Just something for you to think about as a neighbor.
They can be moved, we're going to burn, I have a fireplace, I'm going to burn them for the winter.
Okay.
So it will be moved as they get split, they're getting closer to the house.
Okay, the water issue is not our per view.
The water issue is not an issue for me.
Okay.
There is no water issue, actually, we've been very dry.
Don't, obviously there is a water issue, I'm just not sure how much you caused it or anything like that, I have no idea. Not our issue.
Any other questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Um, you want to, we have a motion?
I'm not sure that we do, because we were concerned about the business here, so.
Okay, so we have a closing reserve.
So what we're going to do, yeah, we have a motion to close and reserve, what we'll do is next month we'll make a decision.
That was what I would like to give you a point on, when I did openly be very friendly with Ms. Beatrice, I cleaned her gutters, everything, but besides that, I did tell her that I was in the antique business and I would love to do it again, but I didn't say that I was opening, literally opening an antique business in the shed.
Okay.
The only things that are in the shed are some chairs that need some seat cushions that I pulled out of my house, that particular table I told you about yesterday.
Right.
My bicycle, some shelving with, with the necessities on it.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Very open shed.
So I have a motion to close and reserve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you don't have to come next month, but, you know, you'll get the decision a couple, a couple of days afterwards, but you're welcome to, or you can watch us on TV.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right?
Have a good night.
You too.
Good evening. All right, item number ten, Appeal three seven five four, Croco, Edward and Catherine Croco, eighteen Leonard Place, Hobble Junction, are requesting a nineteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed twenty-four-foot by thirty-four-foot carport slash garage and a forty-six-foot square foot size, whoa, square foot size variance. Carport is eight hundred and sixteen square feet and a footprint of existing house is eleven fifty-two, pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Says postpone, requesting adjournment?
Oh, sorry.
Come here to open it.
Yeah, no need to open this one, sorry.
You have some people, make sure people aren't here.
Yeah, is there anybody here for this issue? If not, do I have a, can I have a motion to adjourn to December eighth?
Correct, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, I should read my own notes here, huh? Thanks. All right, item number eleven, Appeal three seven five five, Navarro, Navara, sorry, Michael Navara, sixty-four Nathan Hale Drive, Stormville, is requesting a twenty-five-foot rear line variance for a proposed twenty-five-foot by thirty-four-foot, eight hundred and eighty-three square foot detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so we did have a chance to discuss this with you, review your application last month. You have an existing structure that's, you still have a permit for, it's not quite finished, while it wasn't finished as of last month.
No, it's still not finished.
It's still not finished, okay, and what we've said was, you need this structure to actually be finished for the square foot, square footage to count, for you to be within the law for your addition.
Yes.
For the new garage. And because, the way you have, your property, I probably should look at this while I'm trying to refresh my memory here, it's like a long structure going, or the structures kind of head back toward your, toward the back end of your property?
Yes.
And so where you're proposing the new garage is, is around the back there?
Yeah, it'll be directly behind the current garage that's being renovated into an apartment.
Okay, and, but, and there's an existing driveway that you're going to extend that goes past your current addition, what's being constructed now, that's going to go past there and that's what limits the angle that you can put the structure.
Yeah.
The angle that, and so how you're going to get in and out. All right, we also did talk about the fact that you have a shed in the back, but-
Yeah, we've removed the shed, the pool, and the part of the deck that was not permitted.
Okay, so you've taken that, you've removed all that, great, good, no problem. Okay, so the existing other issues we found on your property, you've dealt with. Okay, good. So, is there any comments or questions from board members?
No, good.
If not, is there anyone to speak for or against the appeal from Michael Navara, 64 Nathan Hale Drive, Stormville, requesting a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed 25-foot by 34-foot detached garage? Yes, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Samplone. I live on 8 Nathan Hale Drive, directly behind the Navarros.
Okay.
As you know, 40 feet is the current law for a permanent structure.
50 feet?
50 feet. 25-foot variance is going to put this garage almost in, very close to my backyard.
Okay.
I think it will definitely have an effect on my property value and the surrounding property values. I also think it's going to set a precedent for the whole neighborhood as far as future construction. And I'm concerned that maybe in the future, that this garage may be incorporated into the garage that is now being converted into an apartment to make it a bigger apartment.
Can't do that.
Well-
The code doesn't allow it.
I know, but years ago I granted a variance for some people across the street from me and I was promised that it would always be a mother-daughter apartment, could never be changed. Well, it changed.
Okay.
So things change and based on that, that's where my concerns are. I have a letter here from another neighbor. If you would like to see it, he's also opposed.
Okay, thank you.
And I just hope you consider these factors here.
Can I, can I ask you to come up, just help me identify which is your property?
My-
We have an aerial here.
Sure.
So if you could- I'm not sure I can pick out which is, oh, that one. Okay, so this is, this is the Navarro property.
Okay, so that's me.
So this is you here. Okay, so your house is all the way up here.
My house is here.
Okay.
Yes.
And 25 feet from-
And this is all woods here?
This was woods about a year ago.
Okay. Well, and you can see the trees are actually, the angle that it, it's going that way, so. Okay, super.
I'm just concerned about the-
No, that's fine. It's important to hear from you as a neighbor, so.
And you got the word from the jury.
I'll read this into the record in a second. I just want to be sure you're done. When you are done, if I could ask you to sign the clipboard over there, please. So, so we do have a letter that was presented to us dated October 12th. The above correspondence advised of a request by Michael Navaro, 64 Nathan Hale Drive, Stormville, New York for a 25-foot rear line variance for a proposed detached garage. The correspondence further advised of a public hearing scheduled on 10/13/15 regarding the application. Since I am unable to attend this hearing, I am sending this letter to express my interest in the matter. In viewing the proposal at town hall, discussing the matter with the staff there and observation of the property, understanding of the plan and progress, is that the current attached two-car garage is being expanded and converted to create an accessory apartment. A breezeway is being constructed to attach the new apartment to the existing foundation. And the variance being requested is to construct another detached two-car garage on this approximately one-acre lot. I am opposed to the granting of this variance. Further construction and ensuing encroachment on property lines will have a detrimental effect on my property and on the valued privacy which has long characterized this residential neighborhood. Signed, Joanne Masasorl, 4 Nathan Hale Drive.
Can you explain to me where this letter came, where is this?
Joanne?
Yeah, which is her property.
Which is her property.
This way, this pipe.
This is me?
Yeah.
That's her.
Yeah.
So she has that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Any other names, anybody else wants, want to speak? No? Um, yeah, come on up.
Norma, can you for the record find out the, like, the height of the garage? Because they're only allowed to be 25 feet or one in one stories.
That's fine.
It's a one-level garage, yeah. It won't be, I think that the peak-
Actually, you're not the applicant, are you?
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Oh, you are, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, no problem.
Just that there was some woods between the houses.
That, that was clear, so that's why, so I had the neighbor identify where were the woods there, so.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, all right, so-
Okay, you are the applicant.
Since you're the applicant, yeah. I do have a question. Why are you converting the existing detached garage?
To an apartment-
Yeah, why?
For my son.
Okay.
For my son to live in.
Okay.
You have a rain garden. Why do you need a rain garden between the addition and the new-
Um, because it was concerned about water coming from the gutters from the apartment now. So the water was going to run into the rain garden, so it would absorb it and not run on the property.
Can't you move the garage closer to the addition and have the rain garden on the opposite side?
Possibly, but then the doors are facing very close to our neighbor to the left.
Now the doors are facing-
Right, facing interior.
Yeah, but I'm talking about this-
Right, right now the doors are here. That was the, that's what the discussion we had last month. So that's, that was, again, so that it's less impactful to the neighbors by having them interior. Again, not to say that it's, couldn't be turned around at all. That's a good question. We did it, you know.
Is 25 feet from a next neighbor's properties-
It's not much.
It's not much.
I agree.
And especially if it's 25 feet high, I mean-
But, no.
Well, and especially when you've got all of these structures.
I think it's going to be 13 feet high at the peak.
I mean, the addition is, is it a single-story addition or two-story addition?
Well, no, just a single story.
So everything along the whole path from the garage to the addition, to the new garage is single, single floor?
Yes.
So what's the square footage of the old garage with the addition?
1,200, roughly.
One half of an apartment there?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it all an apartment or is it all, is it something else?
It's all an apartment.
Yeah.
Wow.
Is it possible to bring the new garage closer to your addition and/or change the location of your entrance? Reduce the impact?
We were thinking of changing the location of the entrance if we didn't get the variance by rotating it. But then our garage bay doors are facing our other neighbor who's only 25 feet away as opposed to the building being set back away from our neighbors that are behind us, which are much further than 25 feet.
Correct, and so if you have your, should rotate your new garage and the neighbor is going to see the, either the entrance of the garage or the side of the garage?
Yeah, the profile of the garage is-
Yeah, the profile of the garage is going to be visible to your neighbor anyway.
But it's smaller by about 12 feet, so it's only 24 feet or 25 feet deep. So they'd only see that part. And we're actually going to put, we talked to those neighbors, we're going to put plants, trees there to form like a natural fence there.
Okay, but even a garage, 25 feet by 34 feet is really large, all right? 24 by 24 is a good two-stall garage. So can you reduce the size of the garage? Can we reduce the variance? Instead of 25 feet, take then, take 10 feet off and make it a 15-foot variance. Give your neighbor, you know, an extra 10 feet.
The 34 feet is the width, so that's the neighbor to the right.
Okay, so that is a variant. Is that, is it a three-bay then? It can't be three-bay.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a three-bay, yes.
It is a three-bay?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not helping. The 25 feet in the rear is the-
Yeah, because the 34 feet is farther than 20, I think it's 31 or 35 feet from our side property line.
Actually, you don't give us that measurement. You don't give us the measurement to the side yard neighbor.
Can I come up and see the map?
Well, you gave it 51 feet, but that's, the addition, it's 51 feet.
Yeah.
But when you go to the corner, you don't give us that location.
Can I come up and see the map?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
All right, see, here you're showing is 51 feet, 3 inches to here.
32 feet.
Oh, okay, we were thinking this was-
No, yeah, that's to our side.
So you're saying this to here is 32 feet?
Yes. Sorry.
Okay.
So it is, but is it from the corner or is it from the location you pointed out to be 32 feet?
The corner of what?
Why don't you just come here? Is it 32 feet from here or is it 32 feet from-
This is your closest point. Is that where the 32 feet?
Yeah, that hole, it only goes in about two feet along that line, so it would be, at the front corner, it'd be like 30.
So here it could be 34 and yet it is 32. Okay, thank you.
In the past, when we've had requests for large garages, we've actually asked the applicants to actually give us floor plans to show us how you're going to use that garage space.
Just parking.
It's parking.
That's all it is.
I mean-
Just to put the corner in out of the weather.
If you turned it, seriously, if you turned it the other way, you wouldn't need to be here.
But it would be more difficult to get in.
I know it would be impacting our neighbors who are much closer to our house.
But you have 34 feet, I mean, of, you know, of surface to turn around.
Well, that's, but there were trees on the left-hand side, there were trees there and some rocks there still. I mean, if we went right to the property line, you'd have to like, cut everything down there.
What's the total acreage of your property? You have one acre?
I think it's a little over an acre.
And how many garages, you have a garage on your existing house?
Just one.
That they're converting to the-
No, that's on the house.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you, I didn't even notice that. So you already have a garage?
Are you converting that garage?
No, not on the house.
No.
It's a one-bay garage, correct?
Yes.
Looks like more than one bay.
He said it was one.
Under the house.
On the house.
Under the house.
No, that's what they're converting to the apartment.
Okay, so there's one garage-
This is the 1,200-square-foot apartment.
Okay, so there's one garage and then, oh, this is-
And what's the size of your house? The square footage of your house?
I think it's like 1,400 square feet.
It's 1,400? And it's one story, two?
Um, it's two.
Pam, did we do a measurement of the house, the footprint of the house?
Does this exceed this?
Oh, we did, because that's why we said they needed the addition, the square foot. To get, they need the addition to be completed before, but it's not connected, so how does that, the addition-
It's going to be, it's connected with the laundry room. If you look at the floor plan they gave you.
Oh, got it, okay. Yep, there is a floor plan there. Sorry, we did have this discussion last month. Yes. So by connecting them, the square footage here gets counted. And that's why he needs this to be completed and the C of O issued before we can excuse him from the variance that he's exceeding 60%.
Is there any way of reducing the 25-foot to your back neighbor?
It would affect the angle that you can actually pull into the garage. So I'm not sure how, an exact number that we can reduce it where it would still be feasible to pull a car in and out of the garage.
It appears that you have at least 32 feet because for where the rain garden is, between the end of the addition and the start of this new garage. I mean, again, I don't have a slide here measure or anything like that. But it appears that you have at least 32 feet because it's at least the distance that you're showing to your side yard. So again, why can't the garage be turned around?
You mean have the-
I mean. You have this space here. No buildings here, right? Why can't the garage go here and the doors be here?
We thought it would be a pattern that are right here.
But you have almost 50 feet here from, you know, so maybe, maybe it's 45 up here.
Oh, you mean put it right up against?
Yeah, yeah. Move it, move it here, so you have this-
Or put a little, you know, and little separation if you need to, but it eliminates you needing to be here.
I mean, because your neighbor-
Their house is much closer to the back of their property line.
But here we are, this part-
Okay, they're right here. Here's you.
Were you guys talking about putting it now, what, like to the front?
Yeah, right here. Right on this here.
So-
Because this addition, right there.
But then if they turn it, then the longer side goes back, so they still may need a little bit of a variance, right?
No, I doubt it.
No, they'll pull it up too.
And they'll put it next to the addition.
We were just trying to make it as aesthetic-
Well, they need 25 feet, so they might still, I agree with Mary, they might still need something.
What you're trying to do is aesthetics as opposed to-
Yeah, and our closest neighbor.
Really for aesthetics for you to use as part of your apartment?
No, we were told what the rain garden is.
By the architect?
Yeah, by the building department, yeah.
But it, does it have to go there? Can a rain garden go somewhere else?
That's how the floor plan was probably approved, if that's what they're showing. I did never look at that, but-
Because the neighbor on the side is at least three times closer than any of our other neighbors. That's why we were trying to make it as easy for them to look at. Because right now they look out their backyard and they just see-
But you could probably- Can't you put it where the cadence is and then just kind of swing around the side there?
No. No, there's a height difference in the grounds.
No.
If the concern is not to have the garage doors open to the neighbor, then you turn it and you move it back five feet, you got plenty of room. You're actually getting further away from both properties. Right, because it's, it's longer than it is depth-wise.
You can put it right in front of the rain garden and not moving it.
This way and bring it up and move it-
That's true.
Just as far away from your well. You got more space in the back line and you have more space to your sideline. Your garage doors are facing your neighbors, but-
But it's nine feet difference. The 25-foot side is now going that way, so you've got, instead of 32 feet, you've got 41 feet to your neighbor.
I don't, I'm not sure what yours, where, can I?
Right now, your house-
Turned it so it was right here.
You turn it 90 degrees.
Yes.
Turn it 90 degrees.
So it fit right here.
So the shorter side, the 25-foot side is now your side neighbor.
You can make it wider.
Not the 34-foot side.
Yeah.
So it's nine feet more distance to your neighbor.
You're getting closer to our neighbor.
No, you're not.
No, you're not.
No, it's making us further away.
Your garage is not as deep as it is wide.
It's not a square structure, it's a rectangle.
Yes, but this is a rock hole here and it's not-
Again, but this isn't as deep.
Yes.
So if you turn it and you move it up, so your garage door's out here, you're actually getting more room on the side and you're getting more room on that side.
So instead of a 25-foot variance, you would need-
Maybe a 5-foot.
Well, that, that's out, that side now becomes-
Could be 10-foot, I mean.
The 34-foot.
It's going to be further away, which is going to make your neighbor happier. And it is a good alternative. There's no reason why you can't do it.
It lessens your variance.
I think, I think it will just look better in the back and it would be away from the neighbor.
You're hearing from your neighbor that he, your two neighbors, that they have a problem with it. So we have to address that. All right, we're not ignoring the neighbors.
Alternative which is not a hardship for you. It may not be-
You already have a garage.
It may not be quite aesthetically pleasing to you.
Yeah.
But it's more pleasing to them.
But we have the other neighbor doing it.
Less of a hardship.
They might not like it.
But we're putting it further away from that neighbor. It's nine feet further from that neighbor.
We're going to have to put this over, right? Because we have to get, you've got to get your addition finished before we approve this. So have, look at it, have your architect, whoever's helping you out with this, look at it. And I think if you just turn it, rotate it 90 degrees, you can come up with everything that you want. Because you're going to have your rain garden still. And your rain garden to the front of the garage is all blacktop, so that's not giving you anything. So instead of making that blacktop, in fact, you may save money and have less blacktop in to do if you turn it 90 degrees.
It's true.
Because you're going to be coming straight in your driveway, you're just going to go out a little bit wider, another 10 feet or whatever, make it wider. And that's it. And you'll be further away from both your neighbors to that side and to your backside. So I think you need to take a look at that. I think that's where we're all sort of leaning up here.
For paving purposes, though, we'd have to clear out more trees from our side neighbor.
Now, make a look at it, do your measurements.
I'm not sure that's true.
If you turn that and you're moving it five further feet away, I'm not sure you're, you're going to have that much more paving because you're coming up closer.
Right.
You need to look at these actual measurements and then come back to argue with us. Because just looking at what we have in front of us, looks like a very good alternative. It greatly reduces your need for variance.
And is less impactful on your neighbors. All right?
So we're going to make a motion to adjourn it and you come back with some more information for us?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And if we decide not to, we'll just cancel.
Again, but you're going to have to come up back with us, you can say, shit, we decided not to listen to you? not to listen to you? No, you better come up with some reasons why you're not following the suggestion.
What I would suggest is, you know your neighbors, talk to them, maybe they have some ideas and suggestions. You have two neighbors right here, you have another neighbor who isn't here, which is maybe impacted. So you've got at least three or four neighbors that you can talk to and they may have ideas to help you in this process. And if they support it, then you're already halfway there.
I think you can keep your rain garden as the building department wants and you turn it ninety degrees, you use up that driveway impervious space for your actual garage, you move away from both neighbors. I think it's a win-win-win situation.
Do you have a motion to adjourn next one?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We'll see you next month.
Okay.
Please, if you can, get us more, get us a, get us a drawing by the twenty-fifth of this month? Okay? Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, so that's it for our public hearings this evening. I guess I should have stated at the beginning, there is no item twelve this evening because the applicant is before the planning board. So item number thirteen. Appeal three seven five six, Musi, Gerard Musi, nine Ninam Avenue, Wapinders Falls, is requesting a three-foot rear line variance for an existing twelve-foot by eighteen-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, so you're the first one we have not seen before. So you're, we're going to spend a little bit more time with your application and with all the ones from here on, just so that we understand what you're asking for. All right, so go ahead, explain what's your.
Shed is about two and a half feet. It's forty-seven and a half feet away from the property line. There's woods between me and the, and the neighbor behind me. We've never even spoke. They're up on the hill.
Did you put this shed in?
What's that?
Did you put this shed in?
It's the existing shed behind the house.
When you bought the house, it was existing. Do you have any idea how old it is?
I mean, eight years old, maybe. It's a fairly new shed.
Okay. And how long have you been moved there?
Six years.
Six years, okay. So you didn't, I mean, the fact that you didn't put it there is, certainly helps. Okay. And so it's twelve foot by eighteen feet, so it's not going to be easy to move it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not moving it.
Okay, so tell us about your lot itself.
It's a.
Is it flat, is it?
It's flat and there's a hill going up in the back. My property pretty much stops, like I said, forty-seven and a half feet away from it, which goes up the hill, whereas woods in between me and another house, which we barely ever see in the summertime or it's spring or fall.
Where is your septic?
There's a honeycomb tanks behind the house, about five and a half to ten feet away.
How close to the shed? Are they more directly behind your house?
No, yeah, they're, it's like two hundred feet away or whatever.
All right, what's the shed that we see in the back of the property?
That's the one you're referring to.
Oh, that's what we're, what's the one on the side of the?
That's just a small shed that's been there.
Okay, but that, and that one meets, yeah, that one meets the side yard requirements. Okay.
That one's been there for twenty-six.
All right, so I don't have the dimensions of the back to know the site, the way the survey got cut off?
Yeah, the survey's there, it's forty-seven and a half feet.
No, sorry, I, just, I got a smaller version of it for some reason. Okay. Oh, it's for two and a half feet.
Basically, we're putting addition on the back of the house. And in order to get the C O on the addition, we need the variance on the shed.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, okay, so it's, okay. Two and a half feet?
I, yeah.
And you, and you didn't do it?
I was wondering why you asked so many questions.
Because I was thinking it was this shed. See what I have to work with? I don't have a rear property line. Motion advertised, second.
Norma, Norma, doesn't it look like the, the other corner of the shed is closer to the property line and where it was actually measured to? The, which shed? The one in the back?
Yeah, the one that needs a variance.
I think Mary, you're right, because the way it is.
Maybe.
So you probably just take the.
But it looks like it was measured at that corner.
To the one corner that's further away from the property line than the other corner.
One that's closer, yeah, you're right, maybe it should.
Well, we're going to give them a three foot.
Yeah, four feet, I think, would be fine. What do you think, Mary?
Forty-seven.
I would imagine.
Four feet should cover it.
So are you thinking this shed? Oh.
The only problem I have with the.
All right, so it's.
Yes, the only problem you have.
Is with the application, which says there's another alternative.
What's the other alternative?
I'll be chief by someone to me to grant the variance, they said yes. I think that was a mistake.
Oh, yeah, no. Sorry.
So you're going to amend your application for a four, four feet variance?
Sure.
Can I answer, why don't you have a C O on your house?
No, no, we're putting an addition of, my wife wants a new kitchen.
The dwelling predated zone.
Oh, needed to get C O on house.
Yeah, I was going to say. Put an addition on, see what she started.
No, it's pretty, it's pretty addition, yeah.
He's not going to touch that one. All right. So we're saying motion to advertise for four feet? Just to be on the safe side of that one, with that one corner?
I would say so.
Okay. Yes?
Second, yes.
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Pam, you got to make that change, please. All right, well, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign and then we'll see you next month. To the extent that you can get any letters from your neighbors and take a picture and let us see what it looks like, I'd appreciate that. Picture, please? Okay, thank you. Item number fourteen, appeal three seven five nine Park, William and Jillian Park, twenty-eight Lake Walton Road, Wapinders Falls, are requesting a twenty-foot sideline variance for a proposed twelve-foot by sixteen-foot shed to be located in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. Somebody who's in before this shed gets put in place. Wow. All right, again, first time we're seeing your application, so if you don't mind taking us through it.
I think we provided some pictures also.
Okay.
Just to kind of better explain our reasoning for putting the shed in location that we're considering.
Okay, that's fine. If you, if you have them, we'll take them.
No, we, we already submitted them to the ladies.
Oh, you submitted them, oh. Hold on.
They were color when I submitted them, so I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, all right. This, you're, you're, you have a flag lot that runs along the side of your property?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
So really, the two, they were color pictures, just so you know, who missed them.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
The two, like, proposed places that the shed could go would be at the end of our driveway or to the right, which is near that, the other driveway, our neighbor's driveway. And the reason that we need it on the right-hand side is primarily for safety. We have two young children. And if we put the shed at the end of the driveway, it's blocking our playset that my husband put together. And if he has to take it apart, it might cause a divorce. So it's, that playset is not moving. And, you know, we have two children now, so if our children are playing, the shed's going to be blocking my, my vision of them if one's in the driveway and one's in the playset. So we do have a letter here from our neighbor that's behind us.
Can I, can I read this to you?
You can give it to us.
Okay.
We'll put it in the file for evidence.
It's been notarized.
What we'd rather do is read it in when we do the public hearing, just so that it's, okay?
That's the neighbor behind us that it would be going parallel to his driveway.
All right, just for the board's sake, the neighbor gives, I know your neighbor. The neighbor gives permission to put a storage shed on or near the, your driveway sideline, property line.
And how far is it, what's the distance between the end of the shed and your driveway? Any idea?
From the property line?
No, no, yeah, from the property line to the end of the shed, the proposed location.
We were going to put, we're going to put like the, the snow blower and things like that. So we were going to put the shed right on our driveway and then it would allow how many?
Five and a half feet.
To the dri, to our neighbor's driveway.
So it'll be five feet, basically?
Five and a half feet.
But it's not, I mean, it's only on a driveway, so it's not occluding anyone's vision of anything, it's providing a safety from our children running into that driveway and.
It's at an angle right now, and again, as you saw in the last application, there's two corners, the front corner and the back corner. What is the closest point from the front corner to the, your property line? Do you have any idea? Is it twenty-five feet, thirty feet, five feet? Yeah, right here.
I'm not sure of the question.
There's two corners.
It's not parallel, the driveway is not parallel with your property line?
It is.
It is parallel.
Yeah.
Picture looks like an angle.
Could you explain it?
Shed's going to go right here.
Right there.
And here's the parallel.
But see, the thing is, when you look at this, this is, this is how it is, it's, it's not parallel to the road distance.
Okay, but the shed and that line are pretty much parallel.
Our neighbor's driveway, so it's going to be parallel to the driveway.
Okay, it'll be parallel to the. I, it seems to be a little.
Might be a little, I don't know.
Looks like a little bit, little bit off.
I don't think so.
Okay, it's parallel, okay. So what's the difference, what's the distance between the corner of the shed and the, and the drive, and your property line?
You know exactly how.
Twelve, twelve feet.
You know that for sure? You got pins or something on your property so you can measure it?
I have a measuring stick, yeah.
But how do you know where your property line is?
Because we knew that, looking at the survey, we knew how many feet that we had and my husband has that wheel.
Yeah.
So he was out there with the wheel.
From, from, from our.
Do you know where your property line is, or you going measuring from your house to figure out how far away you are from the property line?
From our garage to the end of our property line is fifty-one feet, nine inches.
Okay.
So that's how I got the measurement.
Okay, so then you're going to go X amount of feet away from your house, plus your width of your shed, and that's going to give you how far away you are.
Absolutely.
Right, because we have a block topped, like, square.
Yeah.
And then, then there's just some flat land, then there's the driveway. It's just a small piece of land that we were going to put the shed there.
So from our, from our garage to the side of our driveway, seventeen and a half feet. And then that's how we got the five and a half feet to the property line, to the end of our property line. If we want twelve feet, sixteen inches.
Are you satisfied with that way of doing it?
That's fine.
And which, which side of the shed is going to be towards the street? The doors on the?
When we open our garage, we would be looking at it.
Okay.
So the doors would open so we could get the snow blower and all that stuff out.
Onto the driveway.
Right.
Onto, yes, correct.
What's it going to look like? What color, what material?
I have a picture.
Is it going to match the siding of the house or?
Uh, I, I believe, I don't think so.
Why not?
Well, we have a gray house, and we, we haven't chosen the color yet, but it's going to be that style.
It's going to look something like that.
Okay.
We haven't chosen the color or anything like that.
We wanted to wait to get approval before we actually.
Is gray, is the color of your house an option?
Sure. We could do, we could do.
Yeah, we'd love to match it to our house, if we can.
I mean, that's going to be preferable.
Trust me, we're not going to choose. We, we have a pretty nice-looking prop, my husband takes good care of our property, we're not going to have anything unsightly or.
I know, opposite Fischko Plains, I, I know where you are. The, can you put any kind of bushes in the front of it just to soften the look of it from Lake Walton Road?
No, but I don't even think anyone could really see it coming down like, I mean, if you're going, the Fischko Plains is on your right.
Right.
And you're going down, you might be able to see it, but the other opposite way, you wouldn't be able to.
But, yeah.
I mean, it's going to be set to the side and we have these sycamore trees along our driveway, we have this, what, sixty-something foot long driveway.
Okay, all right, okay.
We're all the way at the end in the corner.
Okay.
And we have an unsightly house next to us, they haven't trimmed their bushes in the two years we've been there, so it's actually blocking that as well.
So you have, you have vegetation in between.
Yeah, yeah, we have sycamores all the way down until our driveway and then we just have this small piece of land.
Okay.
That we were going to put the shed.
Okay.
Got it. The sycamores are not showing up in your pictures.
Oh. Come take a look, it's nice right now.
You can't miss them.
You'll be enjoying them a couple more weeks.
All right, motion to advertise?
That's why he has the job, not me.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will see you next month. Pam will give you the instructions for your sign.
Do we, we have to come next month?
Yeah.
We do, okay.
If your neighbors have any questions or, you know.
You got the letter.
You had a letter.
You have other neighbors? The noticing goes to everybody within five hundred feet of your property.
Got it, okay.
You're going to go see Pam here.
Yeah, Pam's, Pam's right there, she'll give you, she'll give you the, your instructions for your sign. All right, we'll see you next month. Item number fifteen, appeal three seven six zero Viglotti, Michael Viglotti, two eighty-four Hosner Mountain Road, Stormville, is requesting a twenty-five foot front line variance for a proposed twelve-foot by twenty-four foot shed to be located in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Evening.
Another one who's in with a proposed shed.
Yep.
We're setting a pattern.
Yeah.
All right, again, you've heard me say, this is the first time we're seeing your application, so take us through what's your, why twen, why twelve foot by twenty-four feet?
I just want to get one big one, so later on, I have enough room enough to get another shed. And I have a five by ten trailer I want to keep in there, so it's not in the yard and doesn't look like.
Okay, it's a trailer, it's not a motor vehicle.
No, no, just a, just a five by ten trailer I want to keep in there.
That's just being sure, we just want to be sure it's appropriately a shed, not a garage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And my property's on a mountain, so that's the only place I can really put it.
All right, but you're proposing it. Only twenty-five feet in.
Yeah, there's no other way.
You can't go any further than?
No, I actually excavated it all to make room for it. If I go any further up the mountain, I've got to put a retaining wall and it's going to be a whole.
Is it, in the twenty-five feet between here and Hosner, between when the garage, oh, the, sorry, the shed will start and Hosner Mountain Road, is that vegetation, is it clear, what is?
It's all, it's all cleared out. There's a couple of trees there, but you'll be able to see the shed.
You will be able to see it.
From the road, yeah, it's, it's close, twenty-five, it's probably like thirty feet to the road, but twenty-five feet.
Which is it, twenty-five or thirty?
What do they plot to property?
Yeah, then there's another.
Oh, okay, and then.
There's another little piece from the road to the.
Got it, the right away, okay.
There's no place up by the house?
No, it's all hill.
Well, your house is there, what's your house sit on?
That's the only flat part, really. There's a, there's a retaining wall behind my house, like.
Why don't you get us some pictures of your property?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah, because your survey doesn't have any topo lines on it, so.
Yeah, I'll bring, you'll see from the pictures.
Yeah, looking at your property, you got a ton of places to go.
Yeah, no. All the mountain. You'll see from the pictures.
You need to get pictures, right?
Yeah, no, definitely.
And are there any sheds on the property now that you're looking at?
No, nothing. I just have a two-car garage.
You just think you need this size?
Yeah, 'cause I have all my stuff in my garage now that's at the house, so I wanna be able to park my car in my garage.
I guess what worries me is that the, somebody driving by is gonna see the full twenty-four-foot side and not the twelve-foot side, so that's why...
Yeah, but it's gonna be an Amish, um, you know, one of the Amish sheds, prefab sheds. It just gets dropped in place.
Is it gonna match your house?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the yellow vinyl siding with the shutters and...
You're gonna put any landscaping in front of it, does...
Yeah, I can, yeah. Could do that.
And the doors are going to open towards the driveway?
Um, the big, the garage door will face the driveway, and the two double doors will face the road.
So it's gonna have a garage door to it?
Yeah, it's a gar- one of the garage sheds, but there's a garage door on the front side of it, and then double doors.
And what's it said to ask the question, is it a garage or is it a shed?
It's a shed, but it's got a garage door. It's got two doors, basically.
You can't store vehicles in it if you're using it as a shed?
No, I have a truck anyway. It'll fit in there, so...
What's the base of it gonna be?
Uh, I think I attached the, um, the plans to, with that. It's a plywood floor with the, I think the two by, um, they're like the railitize underneath, just wood. It's gonna sit on gravel. I already got the grounds, the ground all prepared for it.
Is it possible to bring it closer to your existing driveway?
Yeah, you could do that, but I'm still gonna be twenty-five feet from the property.
You should drive by the property.
Yeah, when you go up Hosner, it's on the right, right? It's, it's up on the right-hand side of going up Hosner?
No.
No?
Uh, left-hand side. It's before the farm.
Okay.
Before that.
Before Rushmore.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's on the left, it's, but it's hot. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's before, it's like before House, before Rushmore, five houses.
Because if you bring it closer to our driveway, then your, it'll be further away from your, from Hosner Mountain Road.
Yeah, but not much.
No, I can't.
He would need the side yard.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can go towards the driveway with it, but I can't go up.
All right.
Once you see pictures, you'll understand. It's, uh...
Well, he's not asking for...
Twenty-five.
He's not asking for a side yard, huh?
He doesn't need...
Huh?
What's the sideline requirement?
It's twenty-five feet is all he needs.
Twenty-five feet?
Yep.
Yeah, it's twenty-five.
Yeah, I might be able to get another foot, maybe, like, away from my property line, but it's about it.
Hey, just be careful on the sideline, that you don't get too close to it.
Right. You just wanna be really certain you're not closer than that twenty-five feet.
No, I'm twen- I'm twenty-five feet.
Just because it's only one corner's a twenty-five feet, so...
Is this, uh...
Huh?
It's R three. He needs a thirty-foot side yard.
Well, when was the house built?
Not long ago.
When was the lottery?
Why would this matter if it's, this is gonna be new construction?
The house was built in two thousand and five.
Two thousand and eight.
But it was subdivided in seventy-six.
Okay. Lots that were created prior to nineteen eighty-five only have to meet the R one setbacks, so you didn't need twenty-five feet done.
Even for new construction of an additional structure?
Because the lot was created prior to nineteen eighty-five.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
What was that, what was that, what'd she say?
Well, the depression.
You're okay with the twenty-five feet? Because of when your lot was, not when your house was built, but when your lot was subdivided and created, you actually are grandfathered into the R one requirements, which is only a twenty-five-foot side yard instead of the thirty-foot side yard.
So that's, that's to my neighbor's property, not to the...
Right.
Correct.
To the, okay.
That's the twenty-five, what we were talking about. Make sure you don't drop it closer than the twenty-five.
Yeah, no, I'll hump the hill as much as I can when we, when he drops it in place, if I get approved.
Okay, motion advertised?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, Pam will give you your instructions.
And bring pictures, obviously, next time?
Yes, please.
Yes, please, yeah. Item number sixteen, Appeal three seven six one Dublang. I hope I'm saying that right. Theodore Dublang, four Brook Lane, Hopel Junction, is requesting a twenty-three-foot sideline variance for an existing twelve-foot by twenty-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. Good, okay, so, again, this is the first time we're seeing this. All right, we have some structures on your property that do not have permits?
Yeah, that's why I'm getting variance for it. You got a permit for that shed.
No, we're talk- there's a covered deck?
Excuse me?
Do you have, do you have a covered deck?
What do you mean? I don't...
The... Do you have a deck that has a roof to it?
Yeah, on the house.
The roof over the deck never had a building for that.
The, the, the roof over the deck never had a building permit, so...
No, the build, the deck is...
The deck had a permit, but not the roof over it. It was not supposed to have a roof to it.
I thought you had a, the builder did it, and when he did the deck, he did the, yeah, roof.
All right, how long ago did he do that?
Yeah, forty, yeah, the original owner.
So is the permit for the deck forty years old?
The dwelling is from, says, like...
The builder built the deck.
Seventy-six, seventy-seven.
We built the house, we had to help build, be, be the original owners.
Right, okay.
I'll have to pull the property card, 'cause I thought it's only for a deck, not a covered deck.
Okay, we'll have to look at that. Is there a canvas structure? Do you have a structure in the rear of your property, a canvas structure?
Yeah, that's just a temporary garage I, I put up this year, just for the, for this year. That's coming down.
It's coming down when?
Yes, it is. I needed to store some stuff to keep it out of the snow. You can see it.
Okay, it's, so it's up for the snow. Is it up all year round, or is it up only for the snow?
Well, this year it was up, this whole year.
So only allowed to be?
Yeah, it's only allowed to be up for six months.
I, I didn't know that. See, that's the property, but I can't put it, this shed, no place else, 'cause everything around here is underwater. Everything.
What shed are we talking about?
The whole thing's underwater, and... It's just all underwater. I couldn't put it nowhere else.
Okay, how long did this shed, how long has the shed been there?
About thirty years.
Okay, so you put the shed up?
Yeah.
'Cause you're the original owner of the property?
Yeah.
Okay, is this just water that sits there, or is this an actual pond?
No, there's the Fishkill Creek behind that. This is Paling Road.
Okay.
And when it really rains, the water comes up to the front of this shed. This shed, this is on a, on a slope. This is on a slope, though. It would never get higher, but everything in the middle is my septic tank and my fields, but I couldn't, I couldn't cover all of them up, so that's the only place I could put it.
Okay, so here's the canvas structure back here.
Yeah, but that's, that's coming down.
So this is the existing shed?
Yeah, that's the one I, I wanna get the...
Okay, then what's the yellow shed?
Well, that one, that one, I didn't need a...
That one's okay?
Yeah, that's off the property line. That's thirty, that's thirty-four feet.
Yeah, how, how, how big is that other shed, though?
Ten by, ten by fourteen, I believe.
Mary, ten by fourteen?
That's, yeah, they're allowed a hundred and forty-four, but if it's been here that long, it can only be...
Ten by fourteen.
How long has it had it there?
Thirty years.
Then it was only allowed to be a hundred, so it would be out of permit.
It was allowed ten by ten.
Right.
But now it's allowed a hundred and forty-four, so I made it a little bigger to, so it's within regulations.
Well, see, you're contradicting yourselves.
No, I'm not. Am I?
Yeah.
And you said it was put there thirty years ago, now you said you've just made it bigger, so it's not been there for thirty years.
The original shed was ten by ten.
Okay.
When I first bought the house.
But this is a new one, then?
No, it's the same one. I just put an addition on it.
Okay.
It's the same. I added another...
So it's not the same one, it's different?
No, it's the same one, because it looked like having a extension on it.
Well, but you can't tell there's an extension. It's all, it's all continued into...
Yeah, I built it nice, so you can't tell it's been made up.
Okay, what is this on this?
It's not the same, I guess.
What is this on the side of the shed? Is that a roof to it?
That's just a lean to.
Like a lean to?
Yeah, where I put my firewood.
So if he's got a shed with a lean to next to it?
The which shed are we talking about? The one in the backyard?
No.
The one that he needs the variance for?
Because I was questioning how big the shed in the back is.
Right, that's what he's saying, is ten by fourteen.
Okay.
There's two different colors. The yellow shed is the one in the back. That's the ten by fourteen.
Yeah, but now it's gray.
Now it's gray?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause we, uh, we did the, uh, house, and we made everything the same color of the house.
Well, you're busy.
Okay, but why does this have a dish on it?
Oh, what?
Oh, so this is the same shed?
For my TV.
For your house?
Direct TV.
Yeah.
Are these the same?
Okay, how close is this to your house?
Is this the gray now?
My house is...
Okay.
It's about, uh...
It's the yellow.
Twenty feet.
So you're saying the...
Well, you got the, you got my, uh...
You're saying the creek comes all the way up here to this shed? It floods all the way?
No. It comes, this go, this is sloped down.
Okay.
From, from about here to around, to around here. It's all sloped. It all goes down about, if you put a, uh, a level line from that shed, level line?
Right.
Eight feet of water.
Wow, so this all comes...
To the tip of the shed.
So, wow, it comes up that far?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, all right.
When we built the house...
So it looks pretty when it's not raining?
This wasn't, this wasn't supposed to be here. This is Fishkill Creek right here, and my property goes right to here.
That's not the rock. That's not...
No, this is Paling. Oh, yeah.
That's Paling Road. This is Fishkill Creek, and now they're just built, they're putting a new bridge in.
Oh, so this is the property right before, um... Right after the bridge. Your, the light is right here.
The bridge they're working on now?
The bridge they're working on right now?
Bridge is right here, right where the Fishkill Creek is. They're building a new bridge. Right before the trailer park.
Okay, so you're right before the mo- this is on the same side as the trailer park?
No.
On the other side of the road. Okay, so you're on the slum side.
The next road down is Arrowhead.
Okay. Okay, all right, now I know where you are. Yes, okay, thank you. The Arrowhead gives it, okay.
So this is like sloped. That's why I wouldn't add any flood insurance, I, you know...
Yeah, you're high enough up.
I'm good, but the water comes up, so I couldn't put this shed any place else.
That's, that's a lot.
You get the corner of this shed, from here, you put a level line, it's eight feet of water.
Were these pictures taken at the same time or different times?
What's that?
Were these pictures taken at the same time or different times?
The shed's now gray.
Well, this is kinda... I painted it...
This must have been, this must have been in spring, before the, the trees got their leaves.
This is how big the lot mine are, 'cause I just, we did the house, I built the house, and I, I resided the house.
Yeah.
Gray, so I painted the shed gray, and I made the new shed gray, too.
Okay.
Imagine that I repaint that gray, so there's...
Okay.
We can't worry the water comes drop.
Wow.
And the shed that you have here?
But I couldn't, if I couldn't move your shed any further, that my...
It's probably this tree. This tree is like, wow.
That's another one. That one's old one.
Or no, maybe that's this, and then this one's over there. Okay, all right. Can we have these pictures for the file?
Sure.
Okay.
Which he made it bigger. Yeah, that's the way I have it.
All right, so, motion to advertise?
Wait a minute, what about the carport too close to the property line?
Okay, sorry. The carport, and it has no permit either.
The carport is falling down about a month.
Carport's gonna be removed.
Yeah.
So before we grant training, it has to be gone, if we're gonna grant it.
I was trying to...
Yeah, because that carport, literally, it's on your property line.
Yeah.
You, you have point zero one.
Yeah.
Or point one, sorry, point one.
Only because, I went with, when I put it up, and I put this little, uh, this little walk, uh, driveway there, my house, my original plans that the builder gave me, showed me I had thirty feet from the, my house to the property line, and that would make the property line go this way. So I thought I had plenty of room, but when the, uh...
Surveyor came.
Survey came, that's where he got it. The property line goes this way. And, and, and the driveway is right across along the hedge.
All right.
But now my driveway, see where it is, is over here now.
He's gotta buy an ocean porter, it says.
Yeah. That's why, that's why it's coming down, but I, I just can't do it, you know.
We can't grant your application, it's gonna...
All right, but you've also, you've got it, you've also got a resolved issue of...
You can't have any violations on your property when we're all done.
That violation?
Yeah. It's allowed for only six months.
I just don't have the time to do it right now.
All right, well, we're not gonna get to this till next month anyway, so...
Oh, even next month. So, I was hoping for the spring to take it down.
Uh...
I just had a hippie placement and backer, I just can't...
Chain on your pickup. Chain on your pickup.
I was gonna hire somebody, but I'm retired, and I'm just, I'm a little, little tight.
Just so you're aware of it, you can't have any violations on your property.
And you have to resolve the issue of your deck, and whether it's gotta get covered or not? Whether I have to get a permit? You gotta go talk to the building department. Come on. Yeah, come, come one day during...
Jeff, you checked the card and see if it was part of the original dwelling. I...
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotta get a permit for that?
If it wasn't part of the original dwelling, yes.
What's that?
If it was not part of the original dwelling, yes.
All right, well, I gotta get somebody to...
Everybody wants to do the plan.
I'll have to get the builder who did it to do the same.
Who's your builder?
He's not around.
Oh, I gotta get somebody to make a plan of.
All right, well, you're, you're gonna deal with that issue with the building department?
But what about the other carport? Is he removing that, too, before, or are you gonna give him a variance for that one?
The other carport?
Well, the carport.
He's thinking it down as a...
You're moving the, the canvas structure in the back. Is this carport coming down before you grant the other variance also?
No, the carport's coming down. The canvas structure, we didn't just talk about.
Well, that's, that's, that's...
I thought that's the structure you wanted to remove also.
Is, wait a second, are you saying there are two, there's a canvas structure and a carport? There's two different structures?
There's a shed in the back with a canvas structure next to it. Then you have the shed and the carport in the front.
They call it a garage in a box.
And that's not the carport?
No.
Oh, jeez.
That's in the...
Where's that?
That's right.
I don't think, I don't think you put it on here. I don't know why you did it.
It's where the canvas structure can only be for six months.
Right next to the shed.
And what's, what's up here?
Well, those shed pictures will take a long time, though, 'cause you have water. You haven't had that kind of... You haven't had water like that in your background.
So which side is, which side is the canvas structure on?
Every year. No, in the springtime, not now, when we had that big storm three years ago, eight-foot water, that of course.
Okay, let's get focused on where...
When they built it out, they, they picked up the new Paling Road Bridge.
Guys, we're getting late here. Where is the, where is the canvas structure? Please identify where that is?
Right here.
So it's closer to the sideline?
Right, right next to the shed.
Or is it behind it, or is it next to it?
It's right next to the shed here.
Okay, so that puts it closer to the property line. It really has to go, all right, 'cause other...
It is gonna go.
Wait, with this one's gonna go, or this one's gonna go?
No. No.
This, the carport, the, the carport is going.
Okay.
And the canvas garage is going. So all I'll have is this shed and this shed.
Okay, and, but both of...
You wanted to keep your gar- your canvas going till springtime, is that what you're saying?
I would like to.
Or keep the carport till the springtime?
Yeah, I would like to do that, too, but then I can't get, I can't get the, the permit, right?
But do you wanna just come back in the spring? I mean, we can't ignore it, but...
Is there an urgency to have it done in the next month? This, we can move it to April of next year?
The canvas one, I'm not so worried about. I mean, I understand the rules. But maybe we could just put that in there, that this time to keep is extended till...
You can give a certain time.
How am I just coming up?
Yeah, but the, the other one, I would like to go on. I mean, that's great on the property line.
Right.
An inch away.
But is the shed already there?
Everything is there.
Why are you here, then? Why, why are you suddenly here? Are you selling the house or something, or?
No, not in the future, but...
Well, we've been talking to people that have sold the house, and they've been having issues with the...
So we figured, try to make it all legal.
Yeah, take, take it down.
I didn't know, you know, I didn't know...
It's a good thing you're doing it.
You need a permit to, to do it.
You're doing a good thing.
What's that?
You're doing a good thing.
All right, but they, but John, they've gotta clean it up. That's part of the property. And we can't, we can't ignore it, but...
I don't want to ignore it. I wanna do what's right, but...
Take the, take the carport down, I mean...
How soon can the carport?
If you raise that, the canvas one's coming...
Yeah, we've heard you say that, but what we're saying, we can't do that, so...
What, what about the canvas one? We can't do it either. I mean, you can't even do that.
The canvas one's been there for more than six months already.
Suppose?
I, I'm, looking at Mary there.
I understand.
Don't look at me, look at Mary.
I understand.
Look at the code book. I'm just telling you what the code says.
My point on that one is a ten...
I didn't know, I thought you could have a canvas one...
Right, well, can we, can we say he doesn't, can't get his building permit until the canvas structure's down?
You can give a time for it.
We wouldn't issue his building permit anyway if there's a...
Right, so...
But it's down for the shed. What's the building permit gonna be for?
The shed. He's got a building permit for the shed.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we could do that.
I wanted the building permit for the shed, and everything else is gonna come down.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd rather see it back in a few months, I mean, and everything is cleaned up, rather than trying to do it piecemeal between now and, I mean, yeah, and he's...
Yeah, let's, let's see you in January, all right?
What, what, what do you put in the, the canvas shed?
I got a trailer, and I got a snow blower, so I could keep it handy, and I mown back here.[1631.72]
Boy, you got a lot of stuff. You got all that carport, this canvas garage and two sheds.
Hey, that's, there's a lot here.
A lot of toys.
Whatever the toy is.
Well, give me an option, I mean.
Can you come back in a couple of months and maybe, and then we'll just-
Yeah, we may move to February.
You want to schedule this for a public hearing in February?
I don't have a-
I'd rather have it reviewed in February, because we might, I may forget in-
Second review in February.
Second review in February, yeah.
That's not it.
All right.
If we have a hearing that in March, you can have it out by March.
Yeah, I'll be on it.
So, further review.
So, you want to adjourn this review till February of 2016?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
They'll give you time to think about cleaning it up.
Now, what if I take the carport, the carport down?
Yes.
But I leave the base of it?
What's the base?
It's like a concrete pad.
Gravel.
Oh, it's, it's gravel, it's not a concrete pad?
No, no, it is gravel.
That's no problem. That doesn't matter.
As long as I take the top down.
It's the structure itself.
That's why I have some place to park the car.
Yes.
And I don't have, not the ride.
No, that's fine. That, you can leave it gravel. The item four, that's fine. That's not the issue. It's the structure itself is too close to your neighbor's property. All right?
And again, it's been there for how long? The carport has been there for thirty years, and neighbors have been complaints.
I can't believe what you have here.
Yeah, really. All right, folks, so we're gonna see you back in February.
So, we're gonna have a review in February.
Review or further review.
Give you time to get rid of it.
And then if we wet the whole town, I'll have it down before that.
Okay.
Let's hope. Okay, item-
Wait, do you want to make a motion to vote on that?
No.
To adjourn it to February?
Because it's a review.
It's just a review. You don't have to sign since you're an applicant. Item number seventeen, Appeal 3762 Catalano. Carolyn and David Catalano, 21 Griffin Lane, Hopple Junction, are requesting a variance to allow a structure, solar panels, to be located in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess the first question, and I'm sure everybody's gonna have the same question, why can't they go on your roof?
My roof is not facing the right way.
Okay.
I would prefer, I would much prefer them on my roof. They don't.
Okay, then the next question is, why can't they go in your side yards? Why are you, why are you proposing them in the front yard?
And so, my whole, what's not showing on this permit, on this survey here, which is permitted, is I have a large pool in the deck to the right of my house. And then the whole side yard there, I, I'm surrounded by, by woods. I got, I got woods that go all the way out to Limeell, in the front of my house. And so, it's all shaded. And then in the rear, half of the rear, it's like a wooded, like drop off. And then, and then like the flat part that I do have in my backyard, it's all shaded because of those rear, of those rear trees that go, that go up the mountain. And so, this is the only part that's, that gets any sun. And it doesn't show on the survey, but it shows like my, my driveway there, and then the road goes this way. And so, like, nobody can really even see this part of the yard because of the way that the road is situated. I'm at the very end of a dirt, of a dirt road. And so, like, all the way to one side of me and in the front, it's all woods. It's acres and acres of woods.
Yeah, Griffin Lane, that's a private road, isn't it?
I'm at the very end of a private road, correct. Yeah, and so, like, nobody can even see this, because like my driveway starts like way before this.
But what's opposite you? You have-
In front of me.
Now or formerly quarry? What's?
It's woods all the way out to Limeell.
Corey going, when you go down Griffin Lane, are you to the right?
When you go down, go down into Griffin Lane, my, my driveway starts and then my driveway goes like this, up to the left.
Your property, you're going down Griffin Lane. Are you going to the left of Griffin Lane or the right of Griffin Lane?
I would be on the left.
Okay. Because she was asking you quarry, so that would be not going back to Limeell, because on the other direction, wouldn't it be?
I don't understand what you're asking.
Going down Griffin Lane, you make a left turn into your driveway. Corey continues down Griffin Lane. What's that property like?
It's not, it's not like that. Can I come up?
Yeah.
And so, my, my road-
So, here she's asking.
My, my driveway through Griffin Lane is like this.
Right.
Right, and so, like, when you come down Griffin Lane, the driveway comes up and into my house.
Okay, where is the driveway for Corey? See, now formerly quarry?
There's no driveway for Corey. It's, it's woods.
It's not a-
But she was asking.
Okay, but it's, it's a lot, so somebody could build a house there.
I think it's zone.
I think it's industrial.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one across the street from her, and then next to that is all zone industrials.
That's what I thought, too.
I mean, I hate to say this, but just not all properties are meant to have solar. This is a huge, huge structure. According to what I'm seeing is the dimensions. It's like seventy-two feet across.
It's a large structure.
Yeah.
But I also think that the way that my property is situated, I don't really have a rear yard, because my house is set so far back, like, there is no rear yard to put it in. I would love to put it in my rear yard or my side yard. It's just not doable. And I totally agree in that, like, somebody else's property would not be situated to approve a front yard variance for a solar. But I think that where my house sits, with it being at the end of a dirt road, that the way that my driveway kind of flexes up and in, nobody's gonna see this.
Is it a different elevation where your, from where your driveway is? Does it go down at all so that it gets hidden, or is it level there?
It is level, but there's, but there's trees there, and I'm the only one that would have access to that.
But trees, but trees can die, trees can disappear, you know. I mean, who, do you own the lot next door, the Hepburn lot?
I do.
And so, what's on that lot?
I have, I have a, I have a grandfathered in mobile home there that we rent.
But again, at some point, that lot might have a house on it. They could cut down the trees too, so.
I guess so, right. I mean, I'm happy to do like shading, like fencing, whatever. It doesn't-
What's this other stuff that, in your front yard, you already have an existing deck or something? What's that?
Um, it's just a wraparound porch.
Looks like a deck around the pool, right?
And so, on my house, I have, I have a wraparound porch, and then to the right of my house, um-
No, 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 off to the, what, where you've identified your side yard.
You got-
There's an existing deck and a new deck around something.
And it says foundation. What is that stuff?
I'm not looking at the same thing as you.
The, there's a deck that goes around her property, front and the back, and the foundation is now a detached garage.
Oh, okay.
Oh, right, that, that's a, that's a detached garage, right. And then on the other side of-
Because that's technically all in her front yard, too. Right, your house is this, all the way in the back.
No.
No, that's not, that house is no longer there. See, it says removed.
Okay, that's why there's all this writing on here. I'm trying to figure it out.
Oh, got it.
So, this is your house.
Correct.
So, where that house was, you can't put solar panels?
I would like to. It's just totally shaded, yeah. It's, it's not as big as, as, as it looks, because the mountain comes down there in the back.
There's also a pool and a pool deck over there now, too.
Right, there's a pool and a pool deck to the right of my house.
So, you must be getting some sun there. You're not gonna put a pool where there's no sun.
Because that's sort of towards your south, right?
Right, and so, I get, I get sun on my pool. I would love to put it on the other side of my pool. Like, there's just not enough sun there.
There's also a major elevation difference between the rear and the front. I mean, that's a huge mountain behind our house. It goes right up. It just blocks everything.
Okay.
Back of her house, I don't even think gets sun.
Never.
No, but where the old house was, the house that says to be removed.
Yeah, that's tucked in. The canopy of the trees over there and the mountain behind there is just, it wasn't even a viable spot.
Do you want to say who you are?
Oh, yeah, I'm Doug from Hudson Valley Wind and Solar. I'm the installer. And so, the only spot that it can work on her property is in that front yard. And we tried everywhere.
Does it have to be one huge structure?
I mean, it could be buffered. I mean, it's, it's typically, the footprint of it is, is eight foot by, I think, sixty-five, and then it's got the cantilever and canopy over the top of it, so it's eight foot by about sixty-five feet.
That's, that's massive.
When you say cantilever, what is that?
Yeah, it, it don't-
Well, the overhang.
Somebody's yard. That's huge.
It's about as wide as this, this, this room.
Yeah.
About eight foot deep.
I don't think a structure, my personal opinion, a structure like that doesn't belong in a front yard. You know, and believe me, I, I support solar. That's not an issue. It's just-
I mean, we could buffer around it, shading, fencing. You wouldn't even see it from anywhere but her own house. I mean, you could put trees around it. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to put trees on the, on the south side of it, but you can, you can buffer the backside, east, west, all the way around, so you wouldn't see it at all.
Right, and so, like, I would be the only one-
Right, she'd be the only one that actually can see it.
But you, from your house to where that house was removed, isn't that all clear? From the side of your house, you can't put anything-
Where it says side yard up there, you can't put it there?
I have, I, that's, I have a pool and a pool deck there.
Okay.
Right.
It's not taking that whole area there.
Correct. I think the best thing is, because I am completely confused where the house is, where the pool is, because I thought it was one place. What I would like to see is a new survey, showing everything, the latest, because this removed and side yard, it really, I have no way of making a decision.
Is this was, when was this survey done?
It's old.
Oh, it's old. September of eighty-eight?
No.
Ninety. March, yeah, March twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety.
And everything, everything you're talking about has been-
I have this one, which might be clearer, like, I gave you guys the smaller one?
Yeah, the problem is you've written-
We don't necessarily agree what your side yard is or what you're reading.
I thought you guys wanted that. That's why I put on their side yard.
Okay, but again, the thing is, we do not know where the house is.
This is this here. This is my house. That's my, my garage, and I, and I have a pool and a pool deck here.
It should be shown on there, cause to see that.
Correct, and again, this area has been cleaned, so cleared, so why can't we put the solar panels there?
Why can't it go there?
Because the house has been cleaned up.
All the way across here, this, and like down to here, this is all a huge mountain. And so, like, and it's like, I don't have to here. Like, the mountain starts about here, and it goes like here.
So, where the house was, has grown in?
Well, not the house, the mountain.
This, where this was.
Right, like, I think that it's, it's all mountain about, like, half of my backyard, like, is, this is like, is, is that stone wall? Like, it's like half.
But what we're saying is, this house is no longer here. Why can't this be reused?
It's all shaded. And so, like, because the mountain is so high and it starts like here, I mean, like, those trees are just huge. It's like, it just shades the whole property there.
All right, and so you're-
I'd like to see something around the pool and stuff.
Your pool is here, so why not here?
It's just totally shaded.
We do what's called a solar path line report. We set basically a sundial in the best area on the property, you know, actually show us the shade and the sun throughout the entire day. That's, we got maybe, I think, eighty-five percent sun here, and if we put it over here, we probably lose eighty percent.
Put it by the pool.
You know, we try.
It doesn't have to be eight feet by sixty-five, it could just stack all, I guess, going that way.
The elevation difference in the back of the house, she's probably got maybe what, three hundred, four hundred foot elevation behind the house, and it totally blocks the sun. I mean, it's like, you can't put solar if she, if it doesn't work.
I think aside visit is important.
Yeah, that would be very-
Yeah, but again, I think I, I need a new survey, because right now, it, all the, yeah.
I mean, this is what I'm dealing with. It's-
No.
And, and the house itself, I know it's not optimal, but could it work? I mean, it's skewed slightly to the side, but.
You mean on the roof?
On the roof.
Yeah. And there's no sun in the back of the house, so pointing due south, which it kind of is, but that mountain, I mean, so if this is the roof right there, you have a mountain behind a house that's higher than, than the roof of her house.
Okay.
You don't get any sun on the south side of the house. And we tried every spot and we did try in that open area, one side, nothing. And all the area, of course, is a mountain, so we tried to get a little poppy lines and setbacks, and that was kind of like the perfect spot for the-
Except that's the front yard, and they don't-
Yeah, it doesn't belong in the front yard. I think we'd, we'd be setting a horrible precedent to put something like this in a front yard.
Even though I'm like at the end of a dirt road and nobody can even see there, even my driveway starts like-
But they can use you as an example for their case.
We had one on the other one, we did not.
Yeah, exactly. We, we had one before. They wanted them in the side yard, and we said no.
And just like my own, in my own information, like, it was like a dead end kind of situation too, or?
No.
No, but it was, it was a site that where the, where they were proposing to do it, dropped down significant.
And it was a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it was a cul-de-sac, right. I don't see it.
I think I would suggest that a new survey and a site present.
Well, that's true. What's the matter with that?
Because I don't know.
Because it's, there's no pool, the things are not-
We don't even know where the, where the structures are.
Wow.
Or even a topography, or even some kind of a-
It seems to me on the far side that there should be something where you can line some solar panels up on the far, far side of the pool.
We need alternates. I mean, I, I think from what you're-
Um, Hudson Valley, um, Wind and Solar, um, you actually want a pool, I suppose, and so, yeah, like, it was, it was a no, like, across the board in terms of that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. Not all properties are meant to have solar, unfortunately. All right, you, if you could get it in your side yard, I, I'd work with it. Front yard, I really, really have a problem.
Now, do I have my side yard marked on there correctly?
Well, if this is your house.
I did that. The solar company asked me for it, so I tried, and I didn't know they were gonna submit this. I was just trying to show him what was the front and what was the side and the rear. So, the definition is you draw a line parallel to the road at the house.
Right.
Anything in front of that is, is front yard.
But like, the, my question is like, when you say like parallel to the road, like, parallel to my driveway road?
The road is down, right here, so the line is parallel.
Yeah, parallel to the road means parallel to the road.
So, she's got parallel to the road. She's not going parallel with your house.
In front of my house.
Wow.
You see like what?
There is a road somewhere in front of your house.
You know.
Your driveway connects to something.
This is, this, this all here is-
Griffin Lane is identified here, okay? See how this goes across?
What she's saying is her property's at an angle.
That's what she drew. She drew a line across.
Okay, I, okay, I, I understand. So, like, it would be like here.
She's being very literal, but her property's at an angle, so I mean, by the time you get to her house, there's no room, room left anymore. Okay.
All right, I don't see it.
Yeah, I'm not-
Are you saying it's possible to work?
Yeah.
Um, again, I need a survey.
Right, yeah, all the way.
And even if you have to consider smaller, I, in my mind, smaller panels would work much better than seeing something else.
Or maybe, maybe two locations or something, or some, I don't know, I mean, I'm just guessing right now. But you have to give us alternatives to your current report.
I mean, I was more expensive, but does it have to be a sixty-five foot long thing? Why can't you make, you know, six foot longs that are-
It says seventy-two.
Right.
Yeah, so it's not sixty-five feet, it's seventy-two feet.
Well, okay, but I'm just saying, they could be staggered, one in front of the other, still catch the sun.
Right, I agree. Okay?
So, what's the, you want us to move it?
They'll have to come-
What do you want us to do now?
Review?
Do we, should we extend the review to, let's say, January of next year?
I've done reconsidering stuff at that point.
I mean, if you don't think that could be seen as possible after the site, it would, I think, there would probably be-
Well, how much time do you want to look at?
Yeah, I think-
Want to come back next month for a review?
It's like this is the way there's waiting to know.
I don't think you're gonna win on that, but, okay. I think, because we're gonna look at it, and we're gonna say, why not here? So, you take a tree or two down.
Increase the size from, say, seventy-two, seventy, seventy-two down to fifty?
In the front yard? Not in my, not in my book. But that's, I'm one, I'm not-
See, we're gonna go out there, and if you can't answer our questions if we get out there, then you can't just say it's shaded. Shaded by the, the shadow of the mountain, that's one thing, and then you're getting back to the chairperson's apartment, and maybe you can't put solar here. But to put it all the way up in the front corner of your property, down the road, that's a real, real hard sell.
If we were putting lights on a property, I could get photometrics and understand where the optimum, where the light's gonna shine the brightest. Can you give me something like that with the sunshine? Can I get some sense of where the sunshine is the brightest? Okay, that might help, but.
Again, like the survey, I mean, how are-
So, like, you're saying, like, even with that, it's, it's a probable no in that front yard?
In a front yard. I think we'd be setting a horrible precedent.
And so, like, come back to that for a house with side yard, if we-
Yep, because a side yard's gonna be impacting you more and not anybody else, all right? And then it's your choice.
If I put it on next month and then we deem that we're not ready, we could then do-
Yeah, just send us something by the twenty-fifth of the month. Okay?
Twenty-fifth of this month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna adjourn it for review for next month?
Yeah, it needs, it needs more review.
That's my motion.
Okay, why is that any different than the last one? We don't need a motion.
Oh, we don't need a motion? I'm, I'm gonna get going here.
It just needs more rea-, I know, I, I do too.
Well, make a motion.
Item eighteen, Appeal 3763 Limetone, I'm sorry if I'm saying you're wrong, that, your name wrong. Rocco.
It's late. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Limetone sixteen Warren, Warren Farm Road, Hopple Junction, is requesting a six-foot rear line variance for a proposed sixteen-foot by twenty-five-foot three-season room pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. All right, good evening. So, yeah, you, as you've just heard, this is the first we're seeing this. And thank you for coming in before the room was built. All right, so. Um, as I look at your survey, I'm gonna tell you right off the top, I'm worried about how, how close is your patio to your, your property line?
I'm not sure.
Do you know when it went in? When the pa-, how long's the patio been?
No, it was there when I bought the house. I think it's over fifty feet.
Oh, I doubt it. It's, it appears-
The property line? Because there's a swing set here. Is that, is that somebody else's property?
Um. This is Lan, this is Lansham, yeah, Lansham, Martin, so, um, it appears your house is fifty-eight point six feet to the property line.
Mm-hmm.
And your pool and patio are behind that.
Well, I think when I spoke to, I mean, when I bought the house, I picked up all the paperwork and everything to make sure everything was legit, and my lawyer went over it. And I think at the time, you needed to be twenty-five feet from the edge of the pool to the property line, and, and it was. Rainbow Pool's installed it, so, like I said, it was there when, when I moved in.
All right, I'm not sure you're gonna, I'm not sure you're gonna be okay here. How old is this survey?[1779.61]
Uh, couple of weeks.
Okay, they should be, you should tell them you need to get dimensions for the patio and the pool.
And shed.
And the shed, okay.
What do you mean, the patio?
Come here, too, you can see what I'm talking about. All right, you're supposed to have twenty-five feet from the pool to the rear property line, you're supposed to have-
That's right.
And you're supposed to have fifteen feet, right, Mary, fifteen feet for the patio?
Correct.
Okay, if this is fifty-eight feet-
This is just stone.
It's a patio.
Okay.
Okay, is it like crushed stone, or is it-
No, it's pavers.
It's paver, so it's a patio.
Okay.
So this should be fifteen feet, if this is sixty feet, then halfway is going to be thirty feet, a quarter way is going to be fifteen feet. See what I'm saying, I think your patio is too close to the property line.
This is what was submitted.
So if we're, if you're coming in for one thing, we should-
This is a survey that was submitted for the in-ground pool, and it's not in the location that was-
Who did this?
Yeah.
So I submitted plans for a pool that it didn't put it where it-
And then it didn't put it where the permit says it was going to go, so-
However, it does have, it has a certificate of compliance.
And that's why, because it appears the pool-
Seems to be okay.
Probably meets the, the twenty-five feet, okay? I, I'm, I'm just drawing a line here, I, going by your fifty-eight feet, okay? So, hence my concern, I think this is less than the fifteen feet it's supposed to be.
For the pavers.
For the pavers.
Okay.
And so either the pavers have to come up, or while we're, you're here, we need to get you a variance for this, because you didn't put it in.
Right, yeah, if that's the case, I just-
That's, but we need to know how many feet it is.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why we're saying, if this survey and don't-
So I need to measure that.
You need to have your surveyor, he should be able to get you that measurement, he should have taken that measurement when he was there.
He might have it in his field notes.
All right?
He might have it in his field notes.
Yeah, he probably, he probably has it, so if you can get the measurement to the pool, and then the measurement to the edge of the patio, we need both of those.
Okay.
All right, have them both added to your survey.
Measurement to the, measurement from the pool edge?
Yes, then, so pool edge, patio edge, okay?
The equipment is-
Where's the equipment?
On the right.
On utility connection.
Where it says utility connection, yep, you got to measure this too.
Okay.
All right, because again, that should be twenty-five feet.
Okay.
If that's not twenty-five, that's, that's, that's why we're saying, when you're here, because you didn't do this.
Right.
While you're here, let's clean it up, but-
And, and that's a, so how does that work? You buy a house, everything's there, there's a C of O, you have your attorney check it out, you have the survey, everything's perfect, and then you go-
Except, all right, so what we also need though is, I don't see what this distance is here to your shed.
Okay.
Or this, or this one.
Side and rear.
What?
The side and rear.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, both, both directions, he also needs to get you these.
Okay.
So-
That's a whole lot of variances.
Am I going to actually give you mine, so you can see what you need, okay?
Is this distance closer to the rear line than this distance?
Oh, yeah, look at that, that pool has a-
Let's get that measurement too.
That pool has what appears to be steps, so you actually need here. Okay, now what are these, are these lights, what are these?
I'm guessing that pool is twenty feet away.
Oh, that's a, that's a-
Why, they're, they're light poles?
Yeah.
But Mary, are you worried about light poles, or you're not? Okay.
As long as they don't shine off the property.
Those, they don't what?
Shine off the property, do they? Does the light stay on your property, or does it-
Oh, those aren't even turned on, yeah, the light, it's just a, it's a light bulb.
It's focused, it's focused.
It has a cap to it?
You can even see that backyard from, the reason why I bought the house, because the backyard's solely private.
But doesn't spread to neighbors, or just-
Yeah, your, your neighbor has a swing set that's right here, that, it's not on your property, but it looks like that swing set's awfully close to, but I'm not going to worry about that one. All right, so yeah, so if you can get, we, we don't have the measurements for us to say that this pool is what it is, except-
I guess it's all about twenty feet away.
Yeah, and we're going to, we're going to, so, I don't know how you got that you need a six-foot rear line variance. So it, is, I'm going to guess somehow somebody said this is nineteen feet.
Well, the six-foot, he's going, but, but, there's a deck there.
Okay.
That's C of O, there. And all I'm doing is making that into a, a three-season room.
The three-season room, okay.
Yeah, there's a forty-five foot-
But I have to take it down because, because you have to put better, uh, water, water foods.
Favation, yeah, yeah.
Not foundation, the foundations, we have a-
foundations, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a measurement here, forty-five feet. Is that where the six is coming in?
Yes, that, because it's got to be-
It's probably forty-four, forty-five.
It's probably, yeah, exactly, because he writes forty-five plus or minus, so it's probably just under forty-five, so that's where you're getting the six feet from.
Do you have the actual, the, the new survey I gave you?
Yeah, this is it, yep, so this is the forty, so this is where he's coming in with the six feet.
There's another number there, I think it says forty-eight point five?
I don't see one.
Fifty-eight point five, there it is.
Oh, yeah, that's from the, to the house, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So from the house line to, to the property line is fifty-eight point five.
Right, but again, this pool here-
It's about halfway.
Is supposed to be twenty-five feet. If it's not, we need to take care of that, this should be fifteen feet, I don't think it is.
Yeah, I don't think that's fifteen feet.
And this, this is supposed to be twenty-five feet and fifty feet, I don't think that it is.
Uh, it could be twenty-five feet if it's less than a hundred and forty.
Oh, do you know what the measurement of the shed is? All right, that, that's important to know, we'll need the measurement of that shed. If it is ten by ten, you don't need the fifty feet.
Right.
You just need how many feet?
He needs twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet for rear and twenty-five feet for sun.
But twenty-five and twenty-five. Is that movable?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a-
If it had to move in a little bit?
Yeah, look is good, but yeah, it's, it's just, it's a regular shed sitting on gravel.
So-
It can be moved.
Small landscaped and everything.
Okay, it can be moved.
Yeah.
So, so you need this one, this one, this one, this one, this one, and this one.
So I got to call Rainbow Pools up, because they did all this, this was all before I moved in.
No, you had, you should call your surveyor who did this survey and ask him to give you those measurements.
When was the pool built?
It was over-
Two thousand and one.
So it's ten feet?
No, it was built six months after the requirement changed from ten feet to twenty-five feet.
I remember when I asked, um, before I did this, I, I called up Mike Todd, I said, no problems with the pool, right? He said, oh, you're fine, he said, you're twenty-five feet from the water's edge. I said, okay. And like I said, I know I, I picked up everything when I first moved in, grabbed all the documents to give to my attorney and make sure that it was good.
Um, they did have a certificate of compliance.
Understood, because the pool, except for the stairs, the pool actually looks like it's going to be there. It's the patio that's not, and we don't, I don't know that Rainbow put in the patio. The property owner might have put the patio in afterwards, you generally don't put a patio in right away when you do the pool, because you got to let it settle.
Like you do what you want it to post.
Yeah, you're supposed to let it settle for a little bit, so. So, um, to question, I mean, you just had the survey done, so I would think they should be able to get you this pretty quickly, if they can get it to us by the, if you can get us a new survey by the twenty-fifth, then we can do your public hearing next month, but we need to know what, no, we can't, can we? We have to know what we're advertising for.
So he has to do another survey?
He has to add measurements. Add measurements to this.
Yeah.
He shouldn't have to, no, he just has to add measurements.
This is Paul G. Morton.
They should just be able to add the measurements right on there, yes.
Yeah, Ernie, Ernie, Ernie did it, Ernie Morton.
What chain link fence?
They don't have a place anymore.
You have a chain link fence around your pool?
In the back.
Do you know how high it is?
Yeah, it's four and a half feet.
Okay. Are you sure it's four and a half feet?
Yep, the whole fences, everything is.
Okay, chain link fences are never allowed to go over four feet, and anything over four feet has to be two feet in from the property line.
Okay, so now you've got to add. How far in from the property line is that chain link fence?
It's right on the property line.
It's what?
Yeah, it's only a couple of inches.
It's supposed to be two feet in, then.
It's, so it's not two feet.
Not just four feet?
It, no, yes, because they only make it four feet and six feet, it has to be four feet, they only make four and a half feet, one and a half feet.
Yeah, probably four feet.
They only make four feet and six feet.
So it's not four and a half feet?
No, it has to be four feet, because I'm thinking about, they only make four and six.
You're going to measure that, though, to be sure.
I'm going to measure to be sure, but I can almost say ninety-nine point nine percent certainty, because now that I'm thinking about it, they only make four, six, and I think they make an eight-foot chain link.
So-
They don't make four and a half feet.
I, I wouldn't think so, but-
It's an odd size, that's why.
Yeah, 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 they make four, six, and eight.
But again, you just want to be sure that that chain link fence is not going over your property line, so just-
No, it's not going over the property line.
It's on the property line?
It's allowed to come in two feet.
At four feet, Mary, it doesn't have to come in?
No.
Four feet could be right on the line.
Yeah, yeah, it's over four feet.
Has to be two feet in.
No, no, it's, it's right there.
Okay, that's fine. That, then that one's okay. All right?
Okay, so I need to do all, do all these measurements?
Because, because-
Before we even talk about the, the-
Oh, no, we can talk about that now, but, but we need that to begin with, so. We can't do a public hearing without knowing those measurements.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we, otherwise, if we do the one, you're going to have to pay for a whole new public hearing for us to do everything else.
No, I'd rather do everything one shot, cut you one check and, and hung with it.
We want to clean it up, especially since you didn't do any of this, okay? You inherited this, so that's, that's why we want to clean it up. Okay, so the three-season room itself, there's an existing deck there now?
Yeah, there's a deck there.
Okay.
That was there when I bought the house.
Okay.
It was a C of O. All I want to do is take that same footprint.
Okay.
Actually, not six inches further, uh, than the deck, I'm now fifteen-six, the deck is fifteen feet. So basically, same footprint, put a three-season room.
Okay, Mary-
And then take the other part of the deck down and put the tracks.
Mary, did he have a variance before for the deck?
Uh, no.
If he's replacing the deck?
I know, I don't know how that happened either, because the, the survey we had showed that it met the setback, but this one's showing, um, forty-five feet or something like that.
Yeah, because they were bought the house.
Oh, no, I understood, but again, when you, when the neighbors are, have an opportunity to come in, they're going to want to hear you're using the same footprint, or even six inches difference is not.
You can't even see my house, or, you know, we're divided by woods and mountains and-
Okay. That helps.
No, then we, no, then we do is we hear music sometimes when we show this, but it's-
Okay.
Any comments or questions from board members?
That's enough.
Ah, gee.
All right, but we got to be, but the issue is, because we got to be able to send letters to your neighbors to say what all your variances are.
No.
So, we got to find out how quickly, Pam, how soon do we need to advertise?
Surveyor ask about these.
The letters have to go out by the twenty-first.
By the twenty-first? All right, you actually have a week, so can we get the information no later than Monday or Tuesday of next week?
Did you do the field work? Did you do the field work?
Yeah.
And he's got it in his field notes.
Then he has the measurements, yeah.
By Monday? And I know, because you need time to get them, so if you can get, if he can get the survey results by next Monday, then am I okay, do I, we have a motion to advertise? If, if not, Pam will know to just put it off for the following month.
Right.
I have to make motion, motion to advertise.
So, so now-
Hold on, second, all in favor?
I, just to be clear.
Yes.
What am I coming in with, uh, what, is he giving me something?
He should give you a revised survey with all those measurements on, no, he should have the information already, yeah, he should just have, like, he put the measurements here, he should put them here, 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 that should be on there.
Field notes, probably, you should lose.
The survey, the survey will know what he'd be looking for, they do it all the day.
All, all your, all your permanent structures.
He didn't do it, did he?
He might not have done it for a reason.
The public was thinking we wouldn't catch it.
Yeah.
I know, I'm assuming he did, I mean, that's what they do, a payment of money, sure, you can do everything.
Okay, you're clear?
I think I'm clear.
Okay.
So-
Pam's going to give you your instructions for your sign, okay, so that in the event we can have, get all the information by Monday, then we can advertise, otherwise you'll be, we'll be doing advertisement for the following month.
We'll be doing a review, we'll be doing a review.
I'm sorry?
We'll be doing a review, if we don't get all the information, we'll be doing a review in November.
Okay, so where am I bringing the information, bringing it?
To Pam, to the planning office, right in the front of the building.
So bring it to the planning office, I imagine, uh, Friday.
By Monday, yeah.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, not tomorrow, tomorrow I'll get the information, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And when you drop the paperwork off, you can pick up the sign.
Oh, you guys have the sign?
Yes.
Okay, I'm getting worried, there's two more on here, and there's only one more person here.
That doesn't worry me.
Yeah. All right, we'll see you next one. Item number nineteen, Appeal three-seven-six-four, Cosden, Arthur Cosden?
Not me.
Not you, oh. Seven Pell Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, going ones.
Second call.
All right, item number twenty, Appeal three-seven-six-five, Hanson, Gary Hanson, one eighteen, Woodcrest Drive, Hopewell Junction requesting a fifteen-foot sideline and a thirteen-foot rear line variance for an existing ten-foot by twelve-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. All right, so, first question, it's an existing.
Yes, it is.
You broke that pattern there, we were doing well. Um, did you put up the shed?
Yeah, when I moved here like twenty-two years ago, I was here about a year, and I realized I needed a shed, because I, you know, the lawnmower, the tractor in the garage, the smell of the grass, I don't like gasoline in the house.
Okay.
So I built the shed, I did what my neighbor did, he built the shed about the same distance from the property line, and I come from Long Island, and I know it's not an excuse, but your house had to be five feet from the property line. So building a shed ten feet from the property line, it seemed okay, and it was kind of the logical place to put it. I mean, I had trees and rocks, I don't live in the woods, I'm not saying I do, but there was trees and rocks, and it just fit there, so I built the shed.
I mean, it is relatively small, so we have to ask the question, can you move it?
It's pretty heavy, and there are, like I said, there are rocks on the side, and there are trees, so.
I mean, what is the distance, what, what's in between your house and the, or your driveway and the, where the shed is?
It's lawn.
It's lawn?
Yeah.
Flat, is it steep, is it sloped, is it-
A little sloped, yeah. I mean, what I do is I put in-
You're not helping yourself here.
I put in about thirty hemlocks on my side of the property line-